Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. And as the custom, we're, I will now read the warning for the meeting. The legal voters of the Town of Farmington and those qualified to vote at Town meetings of said town are hereby warned and notified that a special Town meeting of the Town of Farmington is called for Monday, June the 5th, 2017, at 7:00 PM in the Farmington High School Auditorium, 10 Monteith Drive in Farmington, Connecticut, for the following purposes. One, to consider the recommendation of the Town Council that a resolution be adopted: A, to appropriate $1,035,636,900 for the cost related to the demolition of substantially all of the existing Farmington High School at Ted Monteith Drive, Farmington, other than the so-called 1928 building and a portion of the so-called 900 wing. Two, to design construction furnishings and equipping of the estimated 249,017 square foot new high school on the same parcel as the existing school. Three, renovation improvements, furnishings, and equipping of the remaining portion of the 900 wing to provide the new kitchen, servary, and mechanical room for the new high school. Four, renovation improvement furnishings and equipping of the 1928 building to serve as an estimated 10,724 square foot Board of Education Central Office. And five, related site and other improvements and work, including but not limited to expansion of the existing multipurpose athletic fields, renovation of the baseball field, and updates the existing stadium field and track for ADA compliance. On-site relocation of tennis courts and increased parking and circulation improvements, including the widening of Monteith Drive to two lanes in each direction. The project is contemplated to be implemented substantially in accordance with the conceptual plans prepared by Castle Booze Associates, Inc., as of 3/30/2017 entitled Option D1 Site Plan, Option D1 Main Level, Option D1 Second Level, and Option D1 Third Level. As those concepts may be updated from time to time, the appropriation may be spent for design, construction, acquisition, installation costs, demolition and hazardous waste removal costs, equipment including but not limited to building systems and technology equipment, furnishings, materials, athletic fields, parking, sidewalks, lighting, utilities, landscaping, and other site improvements, architects' fees, engineering and other consultant fees, contract administration costs, grant application and administration costs, moving and relocation costs, legal fees, net interest on borrowings, and other financing costs and other expenses related to the project, including the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the project. The Town anticipates applying to the State of Connecticut for school building project grants to offset in part the cost of the project, and anticipates that it will receive grants for the project in the estimated amount of approximately $25,771,11. The Farmington High School Building Committee, or such other building committee for the project, is, as established from time to time, shall determine the particulars of the project and may reduce or modify the scope of the project, including, without limitation, reductions and modifications appropriate in the event of a shortfall in anticipated project grant receipts to maintain the anticipated net cost of the project. And the entire appropriation may be expended on the project as so reduced or modified. To authorize the issue of bonds or notes of the Town in amount not to exceed $135,636,900 to provide that the amount of the bonds and notes authorized shall be reduced by amount of grants received by the Town for the project and not separately appropriated to pay the project costs. To authorize the issue of temporary notes of the Town in an amount not to exceed $135,636,900 in anticipation of such bonds or notes, and to authorize the Town Manager, the Town Treasurer, to determine the amounts, dates, interest rates, redemption provisions, form and other details of the bonds, notes, or temporary notes, and to perform all other acts which are necessary or appropriate to issue bonds, notes, or temporary notes. To take such action to allow temporary advances of available funds, which the Town reasonably expects to reimburse from the proceeds of borrowings, and to authorize the Town Manager, the Town Treasurer, to bind the Town pursuant to such representations and covenants as they deem necessary or advisable in order to maintain the continued exemption from federal income taxation of interest on the bonds. Notes or temporary notes authorized by the resolution if issued on a tax-exempt basis, including covenants to pay rebates of investment earnings to the United States in future years, and to make representations and enter into written agreements for the benefit of the holders of the bonds. Notes or temporary notes to provide secondary market disclosure information, which agreements may include such terms as they deem advisable or appropriate in order to comply with applicable laws or rules pertaining to the sale or purchase of such bonds or notes. To authorize the Board of Education to apply for and accept one or more state grants for each of the new Farmington High School and Board of Education Central Office components of the project, and to authorize the Board of Education, the School Building Committee established for the project, Superintendent of Schools, and other proper officers and officials of the Town to file applications for the State Board of Education to execute grant agreements for the project components, and to file such documents as may be required by the State Board of Education, to obtain grants for the cost of financing the project components, and to authorize the Town Council, the Town Manager, the Town Treasurer, the Board of Education, the School Building Committee established by the project, and other proper officials and officers and officials of the Town to take any other action which is necessary or desirable to enable the Town to complete said project, and to issue bonds, notes, or temporary notes, and obtain grants to finance the project. The Moderator shall adjourn this meeting, and the resolution presented under Item 1 of this warning shall become effective only after having been submitted and approved by a vote on voting machines of persons qualified to vote in Town meetings on Thursday, June 15th, 2017, between the hours of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM. Electors to vote at their regularly assigned polling places as follows. Electors residing in the first voting district and assigned to polling places 1-1, 1-2, 1-3, and 1-4 shall vote at Irving Robbins Middle School, 20 Wolf Pit Road, Farmington, Connecticut. And those assigned to polling place 1-5 shall vote at West Woods Upper Elementary School, 50 Judson Lane, Farmington, Connecticut. Electors residing in the second voting district and assigned to polling place 2-6 shall vote at the Community and Senior Center, 321 New Britain Avenue, Univille, Connecticut. And those assigned to polling place 2-7 shall vote at the Municipal Complex, Monteith Drive, Farmington, Connecticut. Voters qualified to vote at Town meetings who are not electors shall vote at the respective polling place at Irving Robbins Middle School, West Woods Upper Elementary School, the Community and Senior Center, and the Municipal Complex. Absentee ballots will be available from the Town Clerk's office. Said resolutions shall be placed upon ballots under the following heading. Shall the Town of Farmington appropriate $135,636,900 for demolition of substantially all of the existing Farmington High School, construction of a new high school on the same parcel as the existing school, and renovation improvements to the existing Farmington High School 1928 building to serve as the Board of Education Central Office, and authorize the issuance of bonds and notes in the amount sufficient to finance the portion of the appropriation not defrayed from grants, an anticipated net project cost of $109,865,889. Yes, no. Voters approving the resolution shall vote yes, voters opposing the resolution shall vote no. Date at Farmington, Connecticut, this 23rd date of May, 2013, per order of the Farmington Town Council. I'd like to now call for nominations for moderator.
I'm nominating Christian Hoeb.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close the nominations. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's all yours?
Thank you, Mrs. Ray. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Christian Hoeb. Thank you for selecting me as moderator of this special Town meeting. The clerk has read the warning of the Town meeting. Before we begin, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands.
I would like to describe the procedures we will follow this evening. Can everyone hear me in the rear? Can you hear, anyone that cannot? Not well? Okay, let me make a little adjustment here. Is it better? Much better, okay. I'd like to describe the procedures we'll follow this evening. We have one main item to be discussed. That item is to appropriate $135,636,900 for demolition of substantially all of the existing Farmington High School, construction of a new high school on the same parcel as the existing school, and renovation and improvements to the existing Farmington High School 1928 building to serve as the Board of Education Central Office, and authorize the issuance of bonds and notes in an amount sufficient to finance the portion of the appropriation not defrayed from grants, an anticipated net project cost of $109,865,000, oh, $889, I'm sorry. When we introduce this item, I'll call for someone to make the motion, and for someone else to second it. I'll then call on the appropriate Town officials to describe the item and inform you about it. I anticipate those speakers to be William Wadsworth, Chairman of the Building Committee, Chris Fagan, the Board of Education Chairman, Kathy Greeter, Superintendent of Schools. Then there'll be a presentation by Castle Booze, Colliers International, and ONG Industries, Inc. Mark Sklenka will speak, Town Manager Kathy Egan, to be followed by Nancy Nickerson, our Town Council Chair. After that presentation in chief, I'll recognize anyone who wishes to speak on the specific topic. I ask you to come to the microphones and state your name and address for the record. There should be one on each side, one on each side, and I'll try to alternate back and forth. I ask that you keep your comments to the agenda topic and present them as briefly as possible. If you have a question, please direct the question to me as moderator and indicate whom you would like to answer it. Please confine your questions to the topic under discussion, and do not enter into debate on the topic with other speakers. If the comment or question is not germane to the topic at issue, I will rule it out of order. If a number of speakers wish to be recognized, I may set a time limit for each speaker so that as many in attendance as possible may speak. It is important to note, this is an informational meeting only. We'll discuss the item on this evening's agenda, but there will not be a vote on the item tonight. The proposal for bonding will be decided when you submit your vote by tabulator at your regular polling place on Thursday, June 15th, 2017, between the hours of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM. Copies of the resolutions are available when you came in. If anybody didn't have a chance to get them, they're up in the corridor. And so we're going to address the first motion, which is, we're going to seek the waiving of the reading of the resolutions. Is there such a motion?
No.
And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we're waiving the reading of the resolutions. Motion number two, to present the resolution under Item 1 of the warning as read by the Town Clerk. Do we have a motion?
No.
And a second. At this point, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to William Wadsworth, Chair of the Farmington High School Building Committee, who will commence the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hoeb. As he said, my name is Bill Wadsworth, and I am Chair of the Farmington High School Building Committee. We were formed by the Town Council on January 12th, 2016, and our charge was to respond to the statement of needs of the Town of Farmington Board of Education dated April 13th, 2015. So on the slide behind me... Thank you so much. On the slide behind me, I just wanted to show you what we're working with. There's the 1928 original building that's currently 89 years old. There was an addition put on in 1952, an addition put on in 1974, an addition put on in 1978, one in 1996, and then the last one was in 2003. As you can see from the slide, the mosaic itself, those additions, for the most part, went out and did not go up, and due to the age and condition of some of them, we have a lot of issues that are concerning to us and certainly the Board of Education involved in the statement of needs. Some of those issues are code requirements. The building, like you can see, is quite old in some spots, so obviously it's not up to the current building codes. We have ADA requirements that are not being met in this existing facility, both in the building and on the athletic fields. We have safety and security requirements that need to be met. We currently have 23 different exits and entrances into the building, causing some concern about access. We have space needs and sprawl. We talked about the additions when they were put on. Majority of those additions were put on because of student population growth, and they went out, and so the timeframe needed to get from the furthest classroom to the other furthest classroom exceeds the time allotted for students, so sprawl is an issue. Mechanical, electrical upgrades needed to be made. Again, some of the age of some of the additions are quite old and need to be upgraded to our current standards. The building envelope itself is inefficient. They certainly weren't designed for the latest energy codes. We have parking issues, and also we were charged with moving the Board of Education Central Offices from the Town Hall to this facility. Our goal on this building committee, quite frankly, was to address them all, so that this is a 30, 40, 50-year-plus project that will last the Town of Farmington for quite some time. To go through what we've been through for the past year and a half, we did select an architect back in summer/fall of 2016, and they were required to present three different options to the building committee that we would act on one of those. They did present two different renovation options, and as required by the State of Connecticut, they had to provide an option for a brand-new building. And then they would prepare a schematic design based on the selected option. We also engaged the owner's project manager, that's someone who guides the Town of Farmington through the construction, the design and construction process, and we got Colliers. And then we also engaged a construction manager that would help us develop construction cost on the three selected options, and then finally develop a construction cost on the schematic design. Shortly after we started with the architect, one of the reasons we selected Castle Booze was because they brought an educational consultant onboard to help them with the concept of 21st century learning. So we had a workshop on that process back in September of 2016 that was well-attended. We got a lot of good ideas from there, and also we got a direction to the design team as to how to construct the new building, or even the renovations at that point in time. We did come up with concept design estimates back in January 2017, and this was on a building that was 300,000 square feet gross, and those estimates for the renovation one that we had, the estimate for that facility was $150 million, and the estimate for the new building at that time was $160 million. Because of the size of the building primarily, we redirected the consultants to reduce the size and the cost consequently to that process, and they came back with not just the three options that they were charged with, but they came back with seven different options: three renovations, two new buildings, or three new buildings, and then a last one offset from the existing school. The committee selected Option D1, which will be gone over in greater detail later in this presentation, but the total square footage of that at the time was 239,000 square feet, and it ranged from $125 million to $139 million. From there, we went into the schematic design phase, and during that process, there was added collaboration space in the building, and added team lockers for the exterior sports fields, so the final square footage of the building came up to 249,000 square feet. The state's suggested size for a facility with the number of students that are here at Farmington High School was 252,000 square feet, so we were slightly under that. And as you heard, the dollar value to construct a new facility was $135,600,000. We did take a look at repositioning the Board of Education Central Offices, and we were faced with the fact that the 1928 building is a significant building in town, and our four options there was to demolish the building, to fully renovate it, to partially renovate it, or to mothball it, which to me is the same as a demolition five or 10 years from now. The committee chose to use that facility for the partial renovation to house the Board of Education Central Offices. We've done a lot of outreach to the community. I hope you've been receiving some of the mailers we've had, or all the mailers we've had. Like I said, we had that visioning meeting back in September. We've had a number of community meetings moving forward. We've given tours of the building so the people can actually see the condition of the building and need for doing what we're doing. We had a website, still to have a website, Facebook, mailings to the community, and then we did videotape the meetings of the building committee because there was some concern about our timing at 4:30 in the afternoon, so we wanted to make sure that people got the opportunity to see what we're up to. So at this point in time, I guess I'll turn it back over to the moderator, and thank you for attending, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wadsworth. Mr. Fagan? I'm going to adjust the microphone for you. It's set at Hoeb height, so I'm just going to, so people can hear you. That might be a little better.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Bill, and members of the public for the opportunity to come before you tonight. On behalf of the Board of Education, and along with our Superintendent Kathy Greeter, our Town Council Chair Nancy Nickerson, and Town Manager Kathy Egan, to speak to you a little bit about the proposed Farmington High School project. On behalf of the entire Farmington Board of Education, I'd like you to know that this project as presented to you this evening represents the dedicated and collaborative efforts of the Superintendent Kathy, her administrators, my fellow board members, and members of the, and my fellow board members. However, this project could not truly get to where it is today without the dedication, time, and efforts of Bill Wadsworth, the entire Farmington High School Building Committee, along with the team of architects, engineers, and professionals that you will meet and hear from shortly. I'd just like to thank everybody for their efforts. As an innovative learning organization, the mission and vision of the entire Farmington School District is deeply committed to a pathway of continuous improvement. Our teaching and learning process is based upon the collaborative interactions among students, educators, parents, and families, and emphasizes the importance of clear expectations, rigorous standard-led curriculum, inspired instruction, personal effort, and engaged relationships leading to high-levels achievements for all learners. We, collectively as the Board of Education Administration, are ultimately guided in our efforts by the fundamental principle we call the vision of the graduate, whereby Farmington graduates will acquire an understanding of the essential knowledge and skills in the core academic disciplines, and develop the thinking and learning skills needed to meet the challenges of local, national, and global citizenship in a rapidly and changing world. As you'll hear in greater detail this evening, this project represents the time and efforts of many individuals over the last couple of years that was borne out of a dedicated review of this building here at the high school. As a result of these efforts, our Board approved two guiding documents, the Statement of Need and the Educational Specifications. The Educational Specifications, as approved by the Board, define the instructional and educational position statements that describe the values and beliefs of the Board of Education, the leadership of the school, and the school district. In addition, the Educational Specifications outline the areas of the school necessary to conduct the educational programming offered to our students. They fundamentally outline the needs of the high school and define those spaces within limitations set by the State of Connecticut for potential reimbursement. The Building Committee and its team used the Statement of Needs and Educational Specifications as their guiding documents in the design of the proposed high school you'll hear about this evening. The Building Committee and the Board presented the Board with a design proposal that was approved on May 22nd. That design proposal was thereafter presented to and approved by the Town Council on May 23rd, so they could proceed to Town referendum on June 15th. We are aware that Farmington is one of the best and highest performing school districts, not only in the state but also the nation, and our schools, administrators, faculty, and students are routinely recognized for their educational achievements. It is our hope that you find the presentation this evening informative. I want to thank you for allowing us to present to you this evening, and now I'll introduce our Superintendent Kathy Greeter, who will walk through the Statement of Need with you in greater detail.
Thank you, Chris. Since 2013, several reports and studies were conducted related to the Farmington High School facility that have informed the Farmington High School Building Committee's work, and ultimately, the building project that will be presented this evening. The studies and reviews include two FHS acoustic studies in May 2013 and May 2015, an auditorium study in November 2013, an Office of Civil Rights Review in April 2014. This occurs every 10 years for public high schools in Connecticut. A Tecton FHS Facility Review and Report in January 2015, and a NIASC Visit and Report. The visit took place in September 2015, and the report was provided in February 2016. This occurs every 10 years for the purpose of accreditation. Since January 2016, the Farmington High School Building Committee utilized these studies and reviews to conduct a process that led the committee to developing several options to address the facility deficiencies identified in these studies and reviews. The selected option presented this evening addresses the facility needs that are outlined in our Farmington High School Statement of Need, and addresses the educational specifications approved by the Board of Education. In addition, the project reflects feedback from educators, students, community members, elected officials, and experts in the field of construction through visioning sessions in the fall of 2016, FHS Building Committee meetings and presentations occurring since January 2016. As outlined in our FHS NIASC accreditation report, when the school site and physical plant can fully support the delivery of current and future high-quality programs and services, teaching and learning, and opportunities for students and learning growth will be maximized. The studies, reviews, reports, and Statement of Need are all found on the Farmington High School Building Committee's website. I'm now going to turn this over to Colliers International and KBA to review the Farmington High School Building Committee selected and approved building project, which was also approved by the Farmington Board of Education and Town Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Greeter. Again, my name is Mark Sklenka with Colliers International, and we were retained, as Bill Wadsworth noted, last summer/fall to act as the Town's Owner's Project Manager for this engagement. I'm going to walk you through a presentation along with Paul Domino from Castle Booze, the architect. This is a similar presentation that we gave to the Board of Ed and the Town Council last week. First, I just want to highlight some key activities that were commenced post-March 1st, which was the selection of the D1 option. As Bill mentioned, there were many options that were presented. The Building Committee selected D1 to be brought into schematic design. The first thing was the establishment of the referendum date, June 15th, 2017. That was established. As Bill noted, we added square footage, and that was at the request of the State of Connecticut. We met with the State of Connecticut, the funding source for the project, shortly after the selection of D1, and they encouraged us to add square footage, to maximize the square footage based upon the projected enrollment. And then the D1 option was further developed, and you'll see plans and a model of the building throughout the presentation. In addition, we held many, many meetings with the administration, with the Town Managers, the public stakeholders, the Building Committee, working group meetings, subcommittee meetings, all in an effort to make sure that everybody was aware of how the plan was developing and making sure we heard voices from many constituents within the Town of Farmington. Some of the highlighted specifics of the project that don't show up in any colored rendering, but I just want to highlight a few of them. The highest eight-year projected enrollment, and this is something that's required with the State of Connecticut anytime you're doing a school construction project, they're requiring you to project out eight years, and then utilize the highest projected enrollment as the square footage for the building. In this particular case, it came to 1,346 students for the high school, so that became the guiding principle for the number of students for the high school project that the design team designed around. The existing building is 218,000 square feet, gross square feet. Utilizing the guidelines of the State of Connecticut based upon a per-square-foot average, that tells us the existing building can accommodate 1,147 students. Currently, there's 1,201 students in the building, so we're under capacity by 54 students already. The new high school, as Bill noted, was 249,017 gross square feet, again, falling within the guidelines of the State of Connecticut. And again, this does meet the guidelines for 1,346 students. The Board of Ed is roughly 10,700 square feet in the 1928 building. It doesn't occupy the entire building, but about half of the existing 1928 building. The reimbursement rate for the Town of Farmington for new The reimbursement rate for the town of Farmington for new construction is 19.29%. That would be applied to a large percentage of the total project budget. The project will be phased. Obviously, you're building a new school on the site of an existing school. It has to be phased, and I will walk you through some of those phasing concepts in a moment. And as Ms. Greeter noted, some of the Statement of Needs, I just want to identify on this slide behind me. It does correct the ADA noncompliance issues. It does reduce the sprawl. It upgrades the gymnasium and the auditorium. The new plan provides new energy, high-efficient systems. It does have a new STEM or Learning Commons or library within the building. It has the expanded cafeteria to allow for one less lunch wave. The 1928 building is renovated for the Board of Ed. There's a separation between the public and the academic wings, which you'll see in the designs. Robotics does move to the campus, so there is a space for the robotics program within the building. It allows for flexible learning spaces, and it does provide a secure, visible main entrance for the high school. With that, I will turn it over to Paul Domonov from Castle Booze, who's going to walk you through the plans and a model.[682.61][682.61](PAUL DOMONOV) Thank you, Mark.[689.04][689.04](PAUL DOMONOV) I'm going to take this off.[692.12][692.12](PAUL DOMONOV) I think.[695.73][695.73](PAUL DOMONOV) Okay. So I want to give you a quick overview, starting with the site plan, and then we'll lead into the building floor plans as well. Again, my name's Paul Domonov. I'm an architect with Castle Booze Associates. Can everybody hear me in the back? Good. So let's start big picture and talk about the site, okay? So just to orient everybody, this is the town hall. This is Route 4, right? And here is the existing 1928 building. The design proposes that it gets completely detached from the new high school. Here's the existing library, okay? So let's start by just illustrating where the school is now. The 1928 building is here. Currently, the auditorium is approximately here, and the current gymnasium is here. This edge, right here, which is important, this is the edge of the existing 2003 wing, which is the newest portion of the complex, okay? So you see this footprint here. This would be built, and I'll get to this momentarily, but this portion, three-story academic wing, will be built in the existing east parking lot. So everyone has their bearings. This is 1928 building, and this is the edge of the current school. So let's start at Monti Thrive. If we come up to Monti Thrive, what we're doing is proposing a separate parent loop and a separate bus loop. And in order to achieve this, we're proposing to take the tennis courts, which are currently positioned here, and moving them to the other side of the site. So if we approached the building as a parent, we would approach here, have a long queue for a drop-off, and get dropped off at a highly visible, secure main entry, both for parents and for buses. So this is the main entry here. If we were a bus, you would come around the backside of the building and enter the bus drop-off, drop off your students, and then leave back out that way. So we have some parking here. We have additional parking, most likely for staff here, and a secure, highly visible main entry. This also gives space for students to congregate before and after school. Currently, the student entrance, as you leave, it is right on the edge of the driveline. As we go around the school, you'll notice that there's a courtyard here. I'll show you floor plans later, but this is the cafeteria. If we go towards the 1928 building, as Mark mentioned, this is where we plan to relocate the Board of Education. Coming around the backside of the building, this would be the event entry, similar to what we have now. Proposed gymnasium is over here. Proposed auditorium is over here. We also have our Applied Ed, which means wood shop, auto shop, and we're moving robotics as part of the Statement of Needs currently off-campus. It would be shared location here. So we have sort of a outside storage area for a lot of the material storage, okay? It's also positioned, and I'll show you later, adjacent to the auditorium, so they can build, design and build props to put in the drama studio. As we continue around the backside of the building, this is the 19, excuse me, the 2003 wing, the tip right here. Again, here's the edge of the existing high school. This is currently classroom, and the plan is to repurpose that into a mechanical space. So this is where a new mechanical plant would be that would service the entire facility. And we have mechanical equipment, such as a chiller, on the backside of the building as well. This is the existing concession stand, which would be left as-is, and we would introduce accessibility to the upper fields and dugouts and press boxes and grandstands at the athletic fields. That's the extent of the work with the athletic fields. So if everyone has the orientation, big picture on the site, I'll continue to the floor plan. So just to orient everyone again, here's the 1928 building, which is detached from the existing high school. This would be the parent loop over here. This would be the bus drop over here, and this is our highly visible, secure main entry. So starting at the front door, let's walk through the school really quick. If you were to arrive, you would get your credentials in this secure vestibule, and you would get buzzed into the administration. We also have on the second floor, as I will get to it, the guidance is stacked on top of the administration. So if you were a parent going into the school, you would get your credentials, come into the school, either visit the administration or go straight upstairs to the guidance without traversing the existing school and mixing with the student population. So after you get your credentials, what we've done is, this is the three-story academic wing that I mentioned earlier that would be put in the existing parking lot. This is the edge of the 2003 building currently, where the mechanical room would be located. So let's just stop right here just for a moment and talk about the three-story academic wing. What we've done is organized and stacked our, all of our academic classrooms on three floors identically. So we have, within each, this is called our learning communities, we have one, two learning communities on the second floor, three and four, and on the third floor, five and six. So they're all stacked identically. I'm going to go through the learning community really quick. One learning community is comprised of six classrooms, one, two, three, four, five, six, and then seven, sorry, seven classrooms and two science rooms. In the middle of the learning community, we have our teacher planning area, so the teachers get to plan their work and have eyes on the students because it's centrally located. We also have toilets and smaller conference rooms, all that support that learning community. And the important part is that we also have a shared collaborative space. If anyone's familiar with Westwood School, and you see some of the space, widened spaces outside the classrooms, that's pretty much what we're proposing here. It's a space where all these disciplines can gather and sort of cross-pollinate ideas. So it's worth mentioning that within each learning community, we're trying to build flexibility into this whole school so that any of these classrooms could be used for any purpose. It could be, this could be world language, this could be math, this could be, we'll have science as well. But they could be, over time, the idea is that we don't know what might be taught over 20 years from now, but we want to have all these classrooms be flexible enough to handle what may be coming down the road. So one other point I want to make about this three-story academic wing is we located the library right, we positioned it right between the three-story academic wing, so that this turns into somewhat, if you think of it as a student zone, and then on this side with the gym and auditorium, this could be more like the public zone, similar to what we have now with the auditorium, gymnasium. You would have an event entry, which could be used for community use. So as, let's go back to the front. We've passed through the academic area here. We have our library, and this opens up to our gallery, which is our spine that runs east-west. This is our organizing element that, which ties the community area and our student zone. This gallery, we have the cafeteria and servery and kitchen and mechanical space. The gray area represents where we're keeping the 2003 building. So this cafeteria would have a courtyard on the outside, similar to what we have, a senior patio currently now. As we go deeper into the gallery, we get to the gymnasium, auxiliary gym, and its supporting functions, such as PE locker rooms and team locker rooms. We also have receiving adjacent to the mechanical space and custodial. Again, supporting the gym and auxiliary gym is the fitness room and some of the PE office space and storage. On the opposite side of the gallery, we have an auditorium that would, proposes about 650 square, 650 people, which is half the population of the 1,346 approximately. For reference, this room holds about 500. So we would have this as about 650, plus we'd have a mezzanine level on the upper level. I'll show you that momentarily. Behind the auditorium, we have a small studio black box theater. This auditorium will be designed, Farmington has a wonderful music program, very strong, and we're going to design this auditorium to promote the music program here, but also a smaller studio theater to provide space for a smaller drama program. Supporting these spaces are the choral and band room, and opposite the auditorium is the, this is where I talked about the shops, which is the wood shop and auto shop and robotics. We move robotics onsite, and we positioned it after talking with staff that they would like to, instead of creating a separate shop for robotics, we put, is adjacent to the wooden auto, so they can share the tools, which seemed to make sense. This is an outdoor storage area where they could have material storage. Again, they could design and build and support the studio theater with their props and things of that nature. I'm going to move upstairs. Second level, we have guidance at the front door, again, stacked above administration. The learning communities are stacked identically. Each has their own collaboration space. Here's the upper level of the, the library or media center is a double-high space. We're trying to get some natural light in here. We have art central to the whole facility. This would be the gallery looking down into the cafeteria, so think of it as a balcony space. We're trying to get a lot of natural light through here and into the classrooms for the art and out the backside, so we envision this being a very well-daylit space, which would be helpful for academics. As you move down the gallery, this is simply the upper level of the auditorium, which would have sort of boxes around the perimeter. Lastly, third level, more of the same. We have some special ed functions between both of the fifth and sixth learning communities. So, and onto the 1928 building, this is the picture of the existing 1928 building. This is a quick list of the scope of work that we intend to include. Hazardous material abatement for the entire building, new windows throughout, heating, cooling, new exterior walls where we're detaching. We're detaching the building from the existing high school, so we have to repair the backside. New finishes throughout the Board of Ed space. Non-Board of Ed spaces, because we're not going to fill the entire building, we're going to only fill a portion, which I'll get to in a moment, but we would still have to condition this heat and cool, the spaces that are not currently planned to be used for future town use. Sprinkler to the building, be miscellaneous patching and repair the coupla. This is a sort of a diagram of how we could use the Board of Ed, the 1928 building for Board of Ed purposes. Anything in red is what we're proposing to move into the Board of Ed. The white would be spaces that we're not using, so we would only reconfigure the spaces that we need to, to get the program into the building. So this is the lowest level, and without taking up a lot of time, this lower level on the front side, if you drive by on the way out, you'll notice that the grade is pulled up almost to the bottom of the window. So if you're standing in the building, looking out of guidance, the windows are here, and there's earth outside of you. So it's almost sunk in the ground on the front side. So we would propose putting the entry back where it was originally, have a front entry here, but you'd enter sort of at a mid-landing. If you think of walking into a raised ranch where you have a choice of going down about four feet or going up 10 or, so, six or eight feet. So you have that kind of split condition. So if you come in the front door, you would go down, and we would put a new mechanical space here. This would be a space for IT, right? And IT director and facilities. We would have to reorganize the stairs and add an elevator. So on all three levels, we're going to have the circulation spine with two stairs plus an elevator. But what happens on this lowest level is IT and facilities as part of the Board of Ed. We want them on this lower level because they receive shipments, and that, shipments also come here, but then get sent to all the schools in the district, okay? Moving up one level, this is where the majority of the space is planned for. So again, we have the stairs, a corridor, two stairs, and an elevator. That's consistent on all three levels. So in this corner, we have the superintendent's office and support space. In this corner, we have the special services and a couple of conference rooms. In this corner, we have the business office. And in this corner, we have the Board of Ed conference room and adjacent break room, you know, work copy and some file storage. Lastly, third level would be largely unoccupied, but we would have to address the stairs and, for code reasons, elevator, and again, the front stair here. So with that, I'm going to show a quick video loop, and you may have seen this on the website for the Building Committee. Here's a quick massing tool we use to just show the general shape and size of the building. This is the three-story academic wing, all-new, that's built in the east parking lot. Here's our admin and guidance house, is what we're calling it. The intent is to replicate the existing coupla that's currently on the 1928 building to mark that front door. I think it's important, as you get to the top of Monti Thrive, everyone knows where to go. This is the parent loop on this side, and this is the bus drop, and this is the space for students to congregate before and after school. So here's the front door, right there. Administration and guidance above. These are, within the learning community, are the science rooms that are all stacked. These are our additional classrooms. And this space right here is the collaboration space that we talked about, where it's between, the wide space between our classrooms. Come around the corner, you can start to see the cafeteria, the courtyard in the front. This is the cafeteria beyond as well with this glass. This is the music room here. As this widens out, you can see the auditorium and the studio black box theater. This is the corner of the 1928 building. As we come around the corner, you can start to see that will propose the, you know, we have to bend the circulation a little bit to provide circulation around the site. This is the event entry, where this is the auditorium and that's gymnasium. Here's our shops on this side with a screen wall, and this is the fitness room right here. We try to get some daylight up high for the gymnasium with some fiberglass panels. This is the locker rooms that support the gym, and the white represents the existing 2003 900 wing, which we would repurpose from classrooms in the mechanical space. And you can see we have learning community, learning community, and the library positioned right between the two in the student zone right here.[1670.41][1670.41](PAUL DOMONOV) Thank you, Paul. So I'm going to talk a little bit about schedule and phasing. The next few images and the attached, or the above-noted slide represents some of the highlighted scheduling dates should this referendum pass. We would continue designing from July of 2017 through about August of 2018. We would then bid it out to the various subcontractors during September and October. And then there are three major new construction phases, five if you include the demolition and abatement. Phase one, the new academic wing that Paul just described, is the first phase that would go into construction in the parking lot. That would commence November of 2018 and would complete August of 2020 with an occupancy of September of 2020. The next major new construction phase would be the gymnasium, the locker rooms, the kitchen area of the building. That would commence September of 2020 with August of 2021 completion with an occupancy of September of 2021. And then the third major new construction phase would be the auditorium, student dining, the 1928 building. That would be September of 2021 through August of 2022 with an occupancy of September of 2022. All abatement, all demolition would occur during the summer months, and you'll see that reflected in the next few slides. This image depicts the overall layout of the new, which is colored in the light blue, the green, and the orange, as well as the existing, which are the dashed, pinkish and purple lines. So as I mentioned, the first phase would be the construction of the academic wing. And as Paul noted, you could see the 900
and as Paul noted, you could see the 900 wing noted just above that, there you have the blue, and then you have the area to the right. Again, all of that occurs within the existing parking lot of the, of the site, so there will be a clear demarcation zone between construction and non-construction, so that at no point would there be any interface or overlap between the construction or the occupants of the existing building during this period. During the months, the summer months of 2020, the area shown in the pinkish dash area is demolished. So again, students are offsite, abatement begins, demolition begins, and when they come back in September of 2020, the construction of the gymnasium in the kitchen area is underway, and that'll last about 11 months. And again, as I noted earlier, that'll be completed in August of 2021. Students leave, and then abatement and demolition occurs for the areas represented in the purple. They come back September of 21, 2021, and already the auditorium and the cafeteria, dining area, as well as the renovation of the 1928 building are underway. So again, at no point during occupied periods of the high school will there be hazmat abatement or demolition activities occurring. From a construction logistics standpoint, this has been laid out by ONG, the construction manager, and you can see here, when the new addition of the academic wing is going up, this is going to be contractor staging in parking area over here, and students will more than likely be using a temporary parking lot down below the hill with a temporary walk up to the school. When this area becomes completed, it reverses, where this becomes the student parking area that's defined in the current plans, and this becomes the contractor staging area. So again, at no point will there be overlap between student parking or construction activities. There will be a clear separation when they're coming in off of Route 4 as to who's going where, so there will be no confusion. We'll certainly stage major deliveries away from major delivery drop-off, bus drop-off, bus pickup, parent drop-off, and, you know, that's pretty typical in any school project that we're involved with. In terms of the state of Connecticut and the grant process, again, this is probably terrible to read, but I'm going to highlight some, some key points of information. First being the grant application. So the state of Connecticut, the Office of School Construction Grants Review, is the receiver of the grant application, and that is required by June 30th of 2017. Part of that process would be requirement of the approved referendum as well as all the resolutions. So, what's required is the applications themselves, the Board of Education approved specifications, the enrollment projections, the total project costs, all of which we have, as well as the Town Council resolutions, which we also have. And then last but not least, the documentation of locally authorized funding, certified referendum language, and vote count. All of that will be required by June 30th of 2017 for the current application cycle. What is reimbursed, as I mentioned earlier, 19.29% of eligible costs of the high school are considered reimbursed by the state of Connecticut. Typically, in a project of this size, 5% or so usually is not eligible. Items such as loose furniture that isn't attached to the building, any of the work done to Monteith to widen it, or utilities largely are not reimbursed by the state of Connecticut. That's pretty typical on a new construction. The Board of Education receives half of the eligible cost for renovation, which would be 14%. So the renovation reimbursement rate is 29%, they would get 14.64%, and that would be a separate grant application from the high school. In terms of the financial implications, I'm going to walk you through some of the budget development information, and then Ms. Egan will talk about the tax impact. So there are four major factors when developing a project budget. It doesn't matter the size of the building or the type of the project, these four factors are extremely important. The size of the building, we know based upon the number of students and the educational specifications what the size of our building would need to be. The quality of the building, you know, a Mercedes versus a Honda. Farmington style, certain materials, those are all factors that go into a total project budget. The condition of the site or existing building, so we had, we had done a hazmat abatement analysis, we have identified costs relative to the hazardous materials within the existing building. Project schedule, phasing and escalation is extremely important, so all of these factors are considered when developing a total project budget for any school of any size. What's in a budget? There are five major categories. The construction costs, the cost to build the building, to demolish, to do the abatement. The site work, the construction manager cost to manage the project. The furniture, fixtures and equipment, so the furniture that we're sitting on, classroom furniture, lab furniture, office furniture, technology equipment, all of that factors into a total project budget. All the fees and expenses for all the consultants, moving, you name it, are identified. We've got about 75 line items within a total project budget that we utilize a form or template to identify any exposure. Escalation, when you build a building, is a factor, because we know it costs more in two years than what it'll cost today. And then project contingency to cover the unknown or the unforeseen conditions that crop up during any construction project. All of those elements make a total project budget, again, of any size of any type of project. In terms of the overall project budget, again, as I mentioned earlier, we've got about 75 or so line items with, with a lot of detail. The construction manager has an estimate of about 40 pages. This is just a simple way to summarize some of the, the major categories. And you can see the total construction cost inclusive of the 1928 building is $121,899,000. We've got the various technology, FFNE, professional services cost, bonding, special inspections, all identified in a lump sum fashion, totaling a total project budget of $135,636,900. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Egan to walk you through the tax impact.
Good evening, I'm Kathy Egan, I'm the town manager. I'm here tonight to present the financial projections, which will include some bond schedules and budget and tax impact. The first slide I'm going to show is an anticipated bond schedule. This schedule shows a term of 20 years with a rate of 3.25%, with a total project cost of $135,636,900, with an estimated state grants at $25,771,011 for a net cost of This shows the tax impact in year one for the average residential assessment for a home assessed at $232,74 at $115.68 for year one, and $582.74 for year two. After year two, the tax impact decreases each year. The total project cost and tax impact after 20 years is $149,105,36 and $8,912 in taxes for the average home assessed at $232,74. This slide shows the same bond schedule without state reimbursement. Again, this term is 20 years and the rate is 3.25%, with a total project net cost of This shows the tax impact in year one for the average residential assessment for a home assessed at $232,74 at $142.82 for year one, and $720.06 for year two. After year two, the tax impact decreases each year. The total project cost and tax impact after 20 years is $184,62,210 and $11,200 in taxes for the average home assessed at $232,74. It should be noted that it is unlikely that the town of Farmington would finance this project all at once. As these bond schedules show, we anticipate that we'll issue debt throughout the course of the project in effort to help mitigate the tax impact. It is also important to note that this bond schedule is for a standalone high school project without any other changes to the town budget. The town does have a debt management policy. It states that the town's goal is to limit annual general fund debt service to 10% of the total general fund budget. This slide shows the projected debt service as a percentage of the budget. This slide shows the projected debt service for the next four years as we would likely finance it. I've included the projected debt in our typical tax and budget worksheet. This debt is not just the building project, but all outstanding debt as we, that we have today. Since we do not know what the actual town budgets will be, I've made the following assumptions. I show the education budget increasing 3% each year. I show the town budget increasing 2.75% each year. The capital improvement expenditures are based on our capital improvement policy. The grand list growth is shown to increase 0.56% per year, and the state funding remains at the current level. I made these assumptions based on 20 years of history with the town of Farmington. This slide is just a snapshot in time, but it's shown to illustrate the annual debt increases and the overall impact on the budget. Year one is the benchmark and, and is, is the budget that was just approved in April. Our current debt levels are at $7,315,700. In year 1819, our projected debt would be $8,895,458, and with all of the assumptions that I mentioned, the average tax increase would be $261.22 or 4.22%. For fiscal year 1920, debt service would increase to $15,64,915. This is the year we project that our balloon payment for the sewer treatment plant is due. Holding all assumptions, assumptions constant, the average tax increase would be $553.88 or an 8.58% increase. After 1920, the debt would, the debt is projected to stabilize. For fiscal year 2021, the debt service increases would be $15,623,681, and with all the assumptions constant, the average tax increase would be $185.71 or 2.65% increase. After 2021, all things being equal, the debt service would start decreasing. This slide shows various home assessments at the projected tax and budget increase of 4.22% in fiscal year 1819. This slide shows the various home assessments at the projected tax and budget increase at 8.58% in fiscal year 1920. This slide shows the various home assessments at the projected tax and budget increase of 2.65% in 2021. My last slide shows how to calculate your property tax impact. To do this, multiply the assessed value of your home by the tax impact in mils and divide that by 1,000. You can find your assessed home value on the town's webpage. Thank you.
The next speaker is Nancy Nickerson, Chairman of our Town Council.
Good evening. I'd like to begin tonight by recognizing my colleagues on the Town Council. John Landry, Peter Masturbatista, if you could raise your hands. Gary Palumbo, Amy Sufferdini, Meredith Trimble, and John Bibbert. We have worked together for a few years now, and tonight I'm going to explain to you what we've done in the last few, well, the last few years with the, in regard to the high school. On May 23rd, 2017, the Town Council approved the drawings and the cost estimates for the Farmington High School building project, and set the date for a town meeting, which you're at tonight, and set the date for the referendum of June 15th. I'd like to give you a little bit of history behind this project. A few things were mentioned, but there are some reasons why the Town Council and important issues that I'm going to comment on. In April 2013, Accenture acoustic report was done at the high school. November 2013, the Board of Education had a facility study of the auditorium and the music programs. In the fiscal year 2014-15, the Board of Education requested almost a $10 million renovation project for the auditorium here at the high school. The Town Council then asked for a complete study of the school facilities' needs that could result in a look at and a plan for the future of the district. The focus was to look ahead for a comprehensive plan, not a piecemeal project year after year, but a comprehensive plan. In October 2014, the Board of Education formed the Capital Improvement Ad-Hoc Committee to study all seven school facilities. An individual report was produced for each building. In February 2015, a Farmington High School facility report was done by Techtron Architects. In April 2015, the Board of Education approved the statement of needs for the Farmington High School building renovation. In May 2015, the University of Hartford did an acoustical analysis of Farmington High School's auditorium. In January 2016, the Town Council approved the statement of needs from the Board of Education and established the Farmington High School Building Committee. The focus was to have a comprehensive plan for the high school that would bring us out 40 to 50 years, not a piecemeal project to be adjusted and done and revisited every year, every few years. I'd like to thank the Farmington High School Building Committee chaired by Bill Wadsworth for their commitment and dedication to this project for the citizens of the town of Farmington. They've spent countless hours, not only at the regular committee meetings for nearly 18 months, but also time at many subcommittee meetings, tours, evenings and afternoons, going to the schools and the civic organizations to introduce and explain the project, but also to get feedback from the community. On behalf of the Town Council, I'd like to thank our town manager Kathy Egan and her staff for their constant attention to this project. They are part of all of these meetings and all of these tours through this, through this last 18 months. I also want to thank Kathy Greeter, our superintendent, and her staff, and our Board of Education led by Chris Fagan for their hard work during this time. I'd like to thank all of you who took the time out from your busy schedules to attend our meetings all through these, this last year and a half and tonight, and to give, giving your input. Throughout this process, we've had, we've seen a clear indication that there are needs to be addressed at Farmington High School. When we had the presentation at the Town Council meeting on May 23rd, the question wasn't if there was a need, it was how were we going to address the need? How could we address the need? How should we address the need? We discussed the timing of the project in, in cooperation with, in coordination with other projects on our plate and others to come in the future. We talked about the impact on future budgets. We talked about the state financial difficulties and the uncertainties for this year and the years to come. What impact would it have on our bonding? The Town Council made a decision to send this forward to the voters now. The high school building committee has worked long and hard, and there is no doubt, the result that you have seen before you tonight is a state-of-the-art facility. We have an excellent school system that is ranked eighth in the state and is also regarded highly in the nation. We have much to be proud of in Farmington, and our school system is one of the reasons why people move to Farmington and raise their families. Tonight, you have seen and heard all of the information regarding the Farmington High School project. There are currently many uncertainties in our state, but can we say that next year or the year after is going to be better? I urge everyone to get out and vote and tell your friends and your neighbors about what's happening here at the high school. We need to hear from you, the citizens in Farmington.
Thank you, Mrs. Nickerson. Before I open up the floor to any questions, is there anything further on your side? Anything further you want to? Okay. Let's please review how we'll proceed from here. Anyone who wishes to speak on this topic, I ask you to come to the, one of the two microphones there in the aisles and state your name and address for the record. If you have a question, please direct the question to me as moderator and indicate whom you would like to answer it. And please remember that this is an informational meeting only. We're going to discuss the item, you can be heard, you can ask questions, but there'll be no- You can ask questions, but there'll be no actual vote on this this evening. So I see a gentleman cued up to my left. So, sir, are you ready? You have a question or a comment?
Yes, Peter Jones, 21 Briarwood Road, Farmington.
Yes, sir.
For the last 20 years, I've been a very proud resident of Farmington, except for roof four. I apologize to the narrator. I mean, roof four is out of order and always out of order. I thought that was funny. I guess not. I'm disappointed with the school board, the building committee, and the council for approving this design. If you're not familiar with Briarwood Road, Briarwood Road runs right up. It's a quiet cul-de-sac, been in existence since 1960. Our backyards touch the tennis courts and a wide-open school field. The new proposal puts two parking lots in our backyard, one of which is a school bus turnaround, 50 feet from the property lines. 50 feet is from here to the podium. Picture it. 20 idling school buses in your backyard, 50 feet. It's not acceptable. Castle Booze, I thought you were smarter than that. You're devaluing our property, ruining the quality of life on Briarwood Road. When the knowledgeable people of Farmington vote this down on June 15, you'll have to come up with a new proposal. And I ask the building committee, the school board, and the Town Council to do what's right and leave the existing tennis courts alone and put the parking lot somewhere else on the sprawling atrix of this lot. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Dave Huff, 4 Cobblestone Road. I just have a few, I think, direct questions or pointed questions, and I would ask, if possible, is it possible to put one of the slides back up from the presentation? And it's on the handout I think most of us have. It's on page 15, and it's the top slide. And if that's not possible, I'll move on for sake of time.
Well, let me ask. Can someone master the slides? I tried to number the slides as we came through. Which slide were you asking about?
Page 15, and it's the top slide.
Which one? The bond? Tell me when just that. Oh, okay.
Thank you. That's a better way to put it. There we go. That's it. So my first question is, if this referendum passes on June 15, exactly how much will this cost Farmington taxpayers over the term of 20 years if no state aid is realized and we bond the full price? What's the number?
There's a couple of things. First of all, we won't bond the whole thing all at once, like I said. So we'll bond as it goes on, and we don't know right now what the full price is. This is the estimated cost. We're authorizing for the total amount, which is $135,636. That's what you're authorized to do. Whether we'll borrow all that is going to be based on state reimbursement. It's going to be based when we go out to bid, various factors that go along. So that is what we're authorized to borrow, and it's the total amount. But we are anticipated applying for state grants, which was the other slide, which was about $25 million.
But if we bond this actual amount, no matter when it's bonded, no matter when the loans are taken out, isn't that number actually the 184 million at the bottom of that page?
That's what it's going to estimate it to cost with interest over 20 years, if we wind up borrowing $135 million.
Okay. My second question is, if we don't receive state aid-
Yep.
...and the building committee decides to cut the project down to, say, $100 million, is there currently a priority list that states exactly what will be cut? Meaning, are we looking at an all-or-nothing plan? If we have to cut something here, is there a backup? Is there a priority of what gets done at the high school?
David, we haven't got to that point yet, obviously. I mean, we're planning on what we presented here this evening. But to your point, I mean, obviously, size always makes a difference in how much things cost. I think we're currently $500 a square foot or somewhere in that range. So the first thing that we would look at is to reduce the size of the building, and then some of the amenities in the building, we would go and take a look at those and see if there's some value that we can get without hurting the educational process that we're so intent on maintaining.
Third question is, since this isn't the only project that could come up potentially in town over the next 20 years, what is the likelihood that Farmington's Moody's AAA bond rating is affected by this project, that it will drop due to the amount of debt that we are willing to take on in this proposal?
We did recently have a credit rating from Moody's, and Moody's does have concern with the debt. They have stated that the town is contemplating a large high school renovation project that would result in a material increase in leverage and debt service. However, the project remained subject to voter approval. They do have concerns about the debt and the rating agencies, not just about the debt for the town of Farmington, but the state of Connecticut and the issues that they have too.
So for our purposes, for the purposes of the town of Farmington, though, when they say they have concerns, a reasonable inference would be they may consider lowering our bond rating. Is that correct?
They're going to look at it, definitely. I would say yes.
Okay. Fourth question and final one. How precisely would the tennis courts get replaced? My understanding is that we would lose two courts and go from eight down to six, and that these are rather recent additions or renovations to the existing Farmington High
So they'll be replaced in kind, so the same quality standards. But yes, that is correct. They would go from eight to six.
And how old is the current tennis court setup that we have here?
A year. A year. A year or two.
A year or two. And how much did it cost to put those tennis courts in?
Excuse me. I'm sorry. You can't just yell out answers. He's asked a question. He's responding.
If I heard, I heard $1 million. Does that sound right to you?
I don't know. I wasn't involved with that project.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. So there's not going to be any booing. There's not going to be yelling out from the audience. We are going to treat each other with respect. There is a plan here to ask questions. You can make comments. Audience participation is not included. So it's not helpful. It's just going to make the process much longer and more chaotic. Sir?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jay Gassimzadeh of 19 Timberline Drive. I'd like to start to thank the Town Council, the building committee, everyone here and those watching at home. It's really nice to see everyone coming here to discuss critical topics like this, like this project. I come before you today as a public policy practitioner who has spent the better part of the last decade studying and analyzing policies of various size, scope, and subject matter. Before giving my thoughts on this project, I'd like to point out one of the most common mistakes I see communities make in my line of work, and that being us creating a them-versus-us dynamic where we discount the opposing perspective. By unjustly dismissing other opinions without earnest consideration, we undermine this very process and cheat ourselves of the best possible outcome for Farmington. The concern about this project's economic impact in both the long and short term are legitimate. It is natural to be hesitant when it comes to spending large sums of money and long-term commitment. When I look around this room tonight, I see honest, hard-working people who want nothing but the best for this town. I see parents, and I see students and retirees, all of who are trying to read the tea leaves and anticipate some kind of return of investment on this project. I've spent the last few weeks researching different articles and talking with my neighbors and reflecting on my own thoughts, and what I've found is the following. The biggest issue people have with this project is the tax burden, and like I said before, that's a legitimate concern. But when I looked deeper, I found it disheartening to see such inflexibility and a lack of creativity in the financial planning of this project. The financial strategy before us is incomplete, and it is shortsighted. When I look at other municipalities and how they've planned to pay for projects of similar magnitude, I believe, and it's my professional opinion, that this tax burden is greatly overstated. This creates needless uncertainty and angst among in our town. There is legitimate concern also about how the combined effects of the sewer and the high school will affect our bond rating, but I truly believe that with sound financial planning, we will be able to maintain our current status. I know there's this better approach because I've seen it, I've studied it, and I've spent my whole career working in it. With my remaining time, I'd like to take a quick step back and point out what this referendum actually does. We are not locking ourselves into this school design. We are not, excuse me, it does not lock us into a specific school design, and we are not purchasing the school that we see exactly in this presentation. This referendum only gives the town two things. First, it gives a general idea of what we want this school to include and what it will look like. Second, it gives the town up to a certain amount of dollars to spend on this project. I want to make it clear that while we have an estimate on what the school project that we see in these presentations may cost, we don't actually know the cost of this school. We're only giving the town authority to spend up to a certain amount of dollars. By voting yes on the 15th, we do a couple things. We put the town of Farmington in the best possible position to receive state funding. The money that the state uses to reimburse its towns for projects like this is already budgeted and has nothing to do with the general fund where these monies, where the, excuse me, where the deficit exists. This money has nothing to do with the general fund where this deficit exists. If we allow this opportunity to be lost now, we lose our best chance of receiving state reimbursement. Second, and I repeat, we are setting a cap on how much this town is going to spend on a school project. They cannot spend any more money without going to another vote. Third, and I think this is most important, we're making a safe and reliable investment in the future of our town and students. In voting yes, we send a powerful message to the community, state, and beyond that Farmington Public Schools will be best-in-class and will be able to compete with the most highly-regarded educational institutions. A yes vote, excuse me, everyone in this room recognizes Farmington High School's sterling reputation and culture of excellence. A yes vote continues to grow and build on that culture, while a no vote will put it in jeopardy. Folks, this is definitely a defining moment in the history of our town. I appreciate that this is a difficult position, but the time is now to rise the occasion for a better future for our town. The time is now for it to be bigger than our fears and our hesitation to make this township more competitive and attractive to both industry and prospective students alike. The time is now for us to make it to the polls on the 15th and vote yes for FHS. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for keeping that under five minutes as well. I've not asked for a motion to limit the discussion or comments to five minutes, but seeing the number of folks that have queued up, I would encourage folks to try to come within a five-minute period so everyone can be heard this evening and everyone can be considered. Yes, sir?
My name's Arthur Rumpf, 127 Lovely Street, Unionville, Connecticut.
Yes, sir.
I have one question and one comment.
Yes.
Okay. The question relates to voter turnout on this referendum. Given the pathetic turnout of the last two budget votes where everything passed automatically because the apathy of the majority of the Farmington voters not even wanting to show up at the voting booth, will this referendum also follow the same pathway that if a sufficient voter turnout does not occur, will it automatically pass?
The vote is just a majority of who comes out and votes.
Okay. So it's just, it's based on the majority, that there's no minimum automatic pass?
No minimum.
Thank you.
Yep.
And just as a comment, when I see the number of the tax impact, I'm a retiree, okay, living on a retiree income, which is very meager, I'll say the least. When I see a tax increase that amounts to about 10%, rough number, and then we add 3% year after year, this is a primary reason why people are being driven out of the state. I, for one, am going to vote against this proposal. I think the amount that's being asked from a tax perspective, especially on a retiree base, is out of line. I've lived in Farmington for 25 years, and this is probably, it just shocked me when I saw it. I'll just put it to you that way. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, hello.
My name's Yan Wang. I live at 7 Cobblestone Road, Unionville. When I first heard about this project, I know 135 is a big number, and then plus interest, 184 is a huge number. But I didn't know how expensive this new school is until I find out it could make number seven most expensive school in the whole United States. And the top six are all big city schools, or, you know, some are smaller city schools. They have more, the higher enrollment students. So that if you divided the money, the number of the students enrolled in the school, we, our price is higher than number four, five, six. So that makes us, you know, bump up. And Farmington, we all think Farmington is a very good town. I know it's a good town, but it probably is not as rich as we thought. And Farmington, the median income ranked below number 1,000 in the country. So that make me think, this is like you make, you know, middle-class family buy a million-dollar house. This is overspending. This doesn't make sense. Can't be good for the community, can't be good for our future. Well, money is important, but what's more important is our kids. Kids currently in fourth grade to 10th grade are going to be affected by the construction. They're going to spend either one to four years in that construction during the high school years, you know, in the construction zone. And I know I'll be told that, you know, kids will be isolated from construction, but no one can guarantee the dust, the noise, maybe the mold can be totally isolated from our kids, especially for the kids who have allergies. A lot of kids nowadays have allergies to dust, to mold, to many things. I know my kids are. And, I mean, kids' health will be affected, kids' grade, kids' study will be affected. Everybody knows how important the four high school years are to a kid's life. And then someone told me, this is good for the community, and this is good for the future. But our kids are part of the community. Our kids are part of the future. No one has rights to ask our kids to make this kind of sacrifice. It's just unfair. We parents have to protect our kids. We have to say no to this project. If we don't, we're going to regret. We're going to feel guilty in the future. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Beth Kitner, 24 Farmstead Lane in Farmington. I'm a parent of a second grader, a fourth grader, and a ninth grader here in the Farmington School District, so I think I have an understanding for children who are going to be on-site during construction and then younger students coming in. I'm also the president of Farmington Future. I want to start off by thanking the building committee and the Town Council, Board of Education, and all of the people that have come together to get us to this point tonight. It's a lot of hard work. Before I start with my planned comments, though, I keep hearing concerns about taxes, particularly for retired residents, and I thought it might be a good time to ask whether or not the town still participates or offers a tax abatement program for our senior citizens.
I'm being told yes.
And where do people get information to apply for that or find out if they qualify?
On the town website.
And if they don't have-
Under Assessor's Office.
So they would go to the assessor's or call the assessor's office if they don't access through the web?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So Farmington Future is a group of concerned citizens. We have town leaders, parent leaders, grandparents, and others who want to help shape the future of Farmington by supporting its schools, town services, and infrastructure, and we've been in existence for a number of years. About eight or nine years ago, I became more aware of the importance of supporting the schools and the town and all of the work that our elected leaders and town staff do to continue to make Farmington a great place to live. Back then, my children were just beginning to enter Farmington schools. We had been enjoying many town programs like the libraries, continuing education, and recreation programs for children. I knew this town was a special community because of all of that it has to offer. And so I chose to get involved as an advocate back in about 2011 with Farmington Future, mainly because back then, there was a very vocal group who brought a lot of negative- mainly because back then, there was a very vocal group who brought a lot of negativity and accusations to the budget process each year. Teachers, administration, town government, and staff were vilified, and falsehoods and scare tactics were used. And I'm hearing some echoes of that approach these past several weeks, and it's very concerning. The high school project that has been proposed is by far the biggest opportunity ever for our town to embrace the importance of our schools and support the growth and improvement of the high school as an endorsement of what we can and should do to support our community as a whole. Because when our schools do well, our community does well. Additionally, there are going to be features and improvements made to this high school building that all of our town residents can benefit from. This project is important not just for our children, but for all of our residents. Farmington Future believes rebuilding Farmington High School is the right choice for our community. The project has been well thought out. It has gone on for at least 16 months with, under the direction of the building committee. The proposed design was chosen after seven options were presented and vetted. Think about that. I don't think many towns look at seven options for a school project like this. And it's also important to note that the project has bipartisan support. We don't hear too much about that anymore. And there's been much community involvement since the fall. And I understand that many residents are concerned about the rising taxes to pay for the project, yet Farmington really needs to upgrade its flagship school. This high school is where just about all of our students are going to come to complete their secondary education and prepare for post-secondary education and entering the workforce. A continued postponement of these necessary improvements at this high school would show that our community is failing to invest properly in our schools and in our town's infrastructure, and that's been going on for too long. We need to move forward. Perspective new residents are going to take notice if we continue to postpone these projects, and they're likely to consider other towns when choosing a place to live. The projected average tax impact of this new high school, broken down, is $48.56 a month, or $1.61 per day, less than a cup of coffee. Renovating has been, has been shown to cost nearly as much, and would be much more disruptive for students and teachers. Farmington Future believes strongly that we as a town can no longer afford Band-Aid solutions for its school, high school facility. The necessary structural, safety, and facility upgrades that are going to continue to exist if we postpone or choose to do nothing, they're still going to cost taxpayers money. If nothing is done or the project is postponed, we are going to still put money into this building and not get any of the benefits of what this project is proposing. Also, the potential for and the scope of the state funding that we're talking about changes on July 1st of this year, and that is why the town has recognized that this needs to be voted on now. I encourage voters to cast their vote in support of this project for the betterment of our community with a yes vote on June 15th for our students and for our town. And if any of you are feeling like you need more information, the FarmingtonHighSchoolBuildingProject.org website has been very valuable, but there have been some things that are no longer showing there, and that's because of some guidelines having to do with a referendum vote. But the YesForFHS.org website has a lot of those videos and different documents and information, so we welcome you to come there and get the full information there. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, this is Chris Harrison from 36 High Street. I'm going to be very brief. First, I would like to congratulate the town council and the building committee for all the work that they did. I don't necessarily agree with everything that Bill Wadsworth says, but I know that he is fiscally conservative, and I know that he put a lot of time into this, and if he says that this is the right thing to do from that point of view, I trust his judgment. The two people that preceded me, the gentleman who preceded me, two people before me, his comments pretty much encapsulated anything that I could say positively about that, along with the woman that just spoke from Farmington Future. I think that this project needs to go forward. My family has been here for 14 years. I have two daughters who are in their 20s. I don't use the school system anymore, but regardless of that, we will, my family, my wife, and my two daughters, who are in their 20s, will vote yes for this on the 15th, and I urge everyone to please do the same. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. I have three questions and then one comment. If I could get a slide put back up on there as well?
I just changed the slide.
I saw you did that, Christian.
Okay. Do you know roughly where that was?
It's the one right after the one you just had up, the one that shows the budget worksheet.
Bruce Chadwick?
Bruce Chadwick, 9 Taltimbers Drive, sorry.
Warmer?
Keep going. That one, here we go. I just wanted to clarify or make sure I understand the projected 2019, 2020 budget, and Kathy, did you say that the wastewater treatment upgrade debt service is in that, or would that be in addition to what's shown there?
It's included.
That's included? And you said it was a balloon payment that was involved in that?
Yeah, that's, that is the year that we have a large sewer treatment payment due. That's when it's anticipated, and that's something we've projected out, and it's in 1920.
And then the rest of the debt service for the remaining 20 years is also in the, in the future years, built into that?
Yep, that, what we know today.
Okay.
What we know today.
Another question, the, in your notes, you say this is based on the 2012 revaluation. I know we're going through revale right now, and does anyone have an idea of what the impact will be as far as shifting the tax burden to businesses or to residential side? We have a sense of where that may end up?
Not, not right now, no.
Okay. And finally, in the town council resolution, there was a description of an explanatory text that's going to be sent out to homeowners with information so everyone will get something about this project and be able to learn a little bit more about it?
Yes. It's going to all property owners.
Okay, thank you. I, I think it's a, it's a wonderful plan, but in my opinion, it is just not affordable, ladies and gentlemen. I sympathize with the building committee, having served on the building committee for the community and senior center and the police station that was built about 15 years ago. And we went back, probably took us about three years to get that in a, in a process to send to the voters for a $10 million project, which $10 million seems pretty expensive compared to this. But with all the headwinds that we are facing as a state, with the state reimbursements for this project and with other items that are still in the governor's budget, such as a $3.3 million teacher retirement plan contribution that he's looking for, it's the town of Farmington to make on an annual basis starting next year. We know that that's not been included in our budget and has been included in a lot of town budgets, but it would not be, would be on reason to see that show up sometime in the future years. I think we need to go back to the building committee, have them recharged, and, and have them look at a different plan that brings it in at a little affordable, more affordable level of funding. This is just an incredibly expensive project for us to bear and to move forward and pay the debt service on this. And as I shared with the town council, reminds me from 1998, when I served on the council, we sent to the voters, at that point in time, a plan to build a new bridge over the Farmington River, right across Brickyard Road where the, where the Goddard School is right now. The council felt that the voters should decide that. It was going to be a 16 and a half million dollar bridge. It was going to cost the town of Farmington $2 million. The state was going to pay the rest of that. The voters made the wrong decision back then, and I think we have to make sure the voters make the right decision this time around by rejecting this plan. It's a good plan, but it's just not affordable for the town. We need to reject it and move on, go back to the building committee, recharge them, come up with a plan that makes sense from a fiscal standpoint. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Zibby Jazgowski, 9 West District Road in Farmington.
Yes.
Now, major thing which I think a lot of people didn't see exactly is that we won't spend $184 million for expansion, 15% of the existing high school. That's the cost for 15%. For this money, we can build two new high schools in different places. Correct? This is nonsense. If you spent money from own pocket, I don't care. You want to use ours' money. Correct? Correct? Another thing, the tax goes almost triple by next 10 years. Hello? Devonwood, Devonwood, three times. After 10 years, we'll be have raised like the New Britain. You want to live like that? Your prediction is 200 students increase by next few years, 200. This is 20% or less, that's existing right now, amount of students in this high school. You want to spend $184 million for 15% increase? I'm sorry, I'm living in this country 23 years, but this what you're doing, this is nonsense. For me, what I think, reconsideration of this plan is required. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I, again, would like to remind folks, please, we're not, it serves no purpose to applaud after each speaker. So if you could please refrain from applauding or speaking out, you would then be giving other speakers time, your neighbors, your friends, giving them a full, not you, sir. No, sir, I'm not talking to you personally. I'm just speaking to the folks that are interrupting by applauding, and, and I'm not going to, I don't want to have to keep coming back to this, so, yes.
Good evening. My name is Ned Statchen, 6 Bella Lane.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to thank the board and the council for all the work they've done on this project. I think a lot of thought went into it. I just came from a Royals game where we had 10, 11, and 12-year-olds, and unfortunately, the Royals didn't win tonight, but all the kids on the field could be winners if people vote yes on June 15th. I mean, this is an incredible project. It's a great opportunity for Farmington to really give our kids a high school that they can be proud of, and our whole town a high school that they can be proud of. I look around this room, I see broken chairs, I see a lot of work that needs to be done, and it's just not worth rehabbing this, this building. We need a new facility that our kids deserve, their, their future deserves it, and I'm getting, you know, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of alternative facts about this project, and I think it's really ridiculous that, for one thing, the bonding has already been approved for this. People think, oh, the state's not going to have the money. Well, the only way we could lose the state money is if we don't approve this project, because that's what the bonding has been approved for. So let's keep straight with the facts. This is a great investment. This is a great opportunity for our town, and we really own it, owe it to our kids and all the kids in this town to approve this project, because we really need it. I, I'm worried about if this doesn't happen, and we've already had several warnings about our accreditation for our high school. What's going to happen to property values if our high school loses accreditation? Then you're going to see a problem with this town. If we lose accreditation, we're in big trouble. So please do the responsible thing and vote yes on June 15th. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Lenny Baldino. I live on Wawasta Lane.
Yes, sir.
I'm a Farmington High School graduate this month, 40 years. Thank you very much.
You can applaud now, if somebody would like to applaud now.
I've lived here a long time, seen a lot of things. I want everybody to know that I appreciate the efforts I've seen on the budget and the proposal. I am concerned, however, about, I have worked, by the way, in my industry with ONG and Castle Booz in the past, most recently on Platt High School in Meriden, which is a very similar four-phase project as this will be a phased project. The gentleman before me did have an interesting point. A new location would be more cost-effective than a phased operation here. However, I do understand there is a need for a new high school, and I support that need. Both my children are both graduates of Farmington High School as well. And while I do support the need for a new high school, and I applaud Castle Booz, by the way, for their, for their design and stacking, the three-story segment of their proposal. I've seen all too many times as an engineer where architects like to get too fancy, and it makes an engineer's costs go up trying to fish ductwork and piping throughout the building because they want to have tiers and fancy glasswork and whatnot. My question, however, is Nancy alluded to having the foresight to have this be functioning for 40 to 50 years in the future, and one of the other gentlemen said that there is an eight-year look ahead to accommodate the student body. Something doesn't add up for me in that, after that eight-year look ahead, is it possible that we would be undersized, say, in 10, 12 years if we increase the student body by a percent or two a year? And I'm concerned for these taxpayers, myself included, in that in 12, 15 years from now, are we going to have 200 more students than the facility can accommodate? And at that time, are we going to revisit putting mobile buildings on the property? Are we going to be looking at another addition? I would like to know that what Nancy said in the look ahead beyond the eight-year window that we got approved for, if we could accommodate the growth better than that eight-year window.
Yes, sir. Dr. Silva? Do you want to be heard on this?
Not so much.
I would hate to have to revisit this in, you know, in a decade from now.
I understand the question, so Superintendent Greeter?
On March 11th, 2016, Peter Prouda updated our 10-year enrollment projections. This is an individual who's done Farmington's projections for quite some time. We did it for two reasons. One, we were exceeding projections each year at the high school and the district level. So we would project a certain number of students, and then it would come to October 1st, and we would exceed that projection pretty consistently year after year. So we're basing our budget on those projections, so we were concerned. Also, the Farmington High School Building Committee needed updated projections. Peter Prouda does 10-year projections. Anything more than that, there's too much of a chance of being inaccurate. So we really can't go beyond that. And some of the summary statements, I guess, from that projection, and if you want to see the enrollment projection report, it is on the Farmington High School Building Committee's website. Like I said, we've been exceeding projections at the high school and district levels, so projections have been lower than actual enrollment. So this means that, given what we've been receiving, the projections may be a little lower than what we, we believe, but this building is flexible enough. We're adding some classrooms. It's flexible enough to take on that, if it is a little higher than projected. And this, this is actually our first year after Peter Prouda's updated enrollment projections, and just like we experienced in past few years, we did exceed those projections again as a district at the high school and district levels. So if you do look at page six of Peter Prouda's report, you'll see that we expect a slow up, or trend approaching 4,025 students by 2025, but this project uses the high of the projections that we've received, so, and that's something that is a guideline at the state level. So we feel confident that we're building a school building that, you know, meets those, those projections and also provides some flexibility.
Is part of that flexibility, including the 1928 building, if there is the need for extra space?
There will be some swing space in that building. I can't answer whether it can be used for school purposes. I would really rely on our consultants to give that information.
Thank you very much. One last comment, I'll be brief. On the project I spoke of earlier in Meriden-Platt High School, they also have a lot of glasswork, and I saw on the renderings that there might be a lot of glasswork here. I, I noticed that I was getting calls almost daily as a project manager on that project that the shades had to be closed from April until the end of the school year. They had all this nice intricate glasswork. closed from April until the end of the school year. They had all this nice intricate glasswork, and they weren't able to utilize it because of the heat thermal activity, and the room was almost unusable, and the HVAC units were having a hard time keeping up. So Castle Booze, please, just please be advised with your glasswork that it does cause a lot of problems with the heating and cooling of the, of the buildings. Keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, Dexter Willett, 54 Garden Street. I graduated from Farmington High School in 2016, and I'm here on behalf of my little brother, who is part of the class of 2020 and will be graduating from FHS that year. According to the current construction plans, he'll be spending all four years of his high school experience in a construction zone. I am thrilled that he will have firsthand experiences of the changes and will be able to tell future generations that he was there when Farmington taxpayers decided to put students first. I hope that by the time that my little brother is a senior at FHS, I can visit him and say, I wish I had been, I wish it had been this nice when I was here. But then again, forget my little brother. In 10 years, I might have a family of my own. My friends might have families. The entire, the entirety of my graduating class might all have families in Farmington. We want to be able to tell our children, this town's children, that they have this amazing school because we voted yes on June 15th. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
I'm Wen Liang. I'm living Oakland Avenue. I have, I moved here like five years ago, and I have two kids. One is three, one is eight. Suppose that someday there will be students in this high school. They think I'm a good storyteller, so today I want to tell a brief story, but relevant. I work in Yale. I have a collaborator who lives in an old house. See, 10 years ago, he updated his house. He spent like $200,000. By the way, his house, maybe he owned, estimated about $500,000. It works well, good, for 10 years. It's, it's good. But this spring, bad things happened. His daughter, his study, the windows broken. Oh, I lied. The ceiling also felt cracks. Bad things, bad things. He loves his daughters that much. That is not tolerable. So he decided that we should pour down, put down the whole house and build a new one. So $200,000 spent to put down the house and $1 million to build a new one. Fancy, state-of-the-art. And I believe his daughter will love it. He asked me, do you like this plan? We are good friends. He asked me, do you like this plan? I said, totally okay. Excellent. If your daughter loves it, why not? But I also have a good, good suggestion. The Powerball jackpot, today it goes to $375 million? Go for it. You need it. You need luck. You know, I fixed this story. This is a fake. But our town has the same problem, exact same problem, to build, to rebuild this high school. And remember, that guy can have, although the chance is small, but his real chance, he can win the Powerball for like 300s of millions of dollars. But our town, no chance, no chance. Who will pay for that? No chance. It's only collect from you and I, the taxpayers. And it will be paid for 20 years. I'm thinking, if I play my, if we plan our third child, next year, he or she will be born. And 19 years later, he will graduate from this school, and we are still paying for the debt today we make. Does it make sense? It's not affordable. Definitely, there are many kinds of solutions. This is the worst solution, the most expensive solution. I will, will, no. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
George Ryder from Nine Glenmore Drive. I comment as a longstanding citizen of Farmington and also now a senior citizen and exceeding 75, I guess, a very senior citizen. But the thing that I come here, let me, let me acknowledge that the, the cost of this project is, is an attention getter, I think, for all of us. And, and none of us, whether we're senior citizens or not, like to see added costs unless it's necessary. And the two questions arriving at my decision was, is it necessary? And I think that's been spoken to so clearly in the mailings and here tonight. We need a new facility. The second question is, have we arrived at the right solution? And I, knowing many of the people on the building committee, on the council, on the school board, I have great confidence that they are dedicated to the community and dedicated to doing this in the most economic way possible. I hear the suggestion, we'll take it back. What I'm hearing is, it was taken back on several occasions by the building committee to try to find alternatives, and this is what you're proposing to us. I, I support this 110% for a number of reasons. One is for support of our young people, that they continue to get the quality education that this town has provided over years. We as citizens have provided that opportunity for their own life and their future. But also from our perspective as citizens, we live in a global economy. We're seeing competition every night on the television with other countries. We have to have the finest educated young people if we're going to go forward into the future. Also, from my perspective, from a more selfish perspective, one of my biggest assets, if not the biggest, and I suspect for all you, is my home. And people over the many years have come to this town in entry-level homes to gain an education that this town provides for their children. People who can afford a higher-cost home, the first question they have of the real estate agent or whatever is, do they have a good education? That was Carol in my first question in 1975. So I think that we owe that to the, to the young people and to ourselves. I just want to point out one thing, and, and being senior, you have a longer history. And I'd like to speak of the last 25 or 30 years, having served in government and been out of government for many years now. There's one perfect track record, and that track record is whenever the council and where it was a school facility, the, the school board recommended something to the community, and it was defeated. And I understand there's people for this building and against it. I just hope that any campaign or effort against it is kept factual and on the merits. But the, the perfect record is that when the town turned down the recommendation of the council and the board, it ended up costing us millions and millions of dollars more. And let me just quickly comment on several. In the 19, about 1990, the school board proposed to the council that they build a new upper elementary school. That was defeated for a lot of reasons. Some were the voices of doom, that the school board wasn't being correct in its estimation of future population, and on and on. But time proved they were right, and that building was finally built, but at additional cost of construction cost, higher interest rate, and lower state funding. Then, the proposal was, let's re- renovate the town hall, because the police department, for one, needed more space. A renovation committee was appointed, and they came back and said, we'll take the entire lower floor where the town clerk's office is, and we'll convert that into a police station. The cell blocks, there, everything is needed, and it would meet the needs then and into the future. That was rejected. What do we have? A wonderful building across the river, but one that costs millions and millions of dollars more. Somebody referenced 10 million than it would have cost to renovate the town hall. The Greenbrier, when you look at, you could have purchased the Greenbrier for $2 million, which would allow the consolidation of the school administration in the one location, and we'd have had 25 or 30-some acres of land along Route 4. It was rejected. Who would not wish that we would have bought the Greenbrier? And finally, in a very timely subject, the town council recommended in conjunction with the state of Connecticut 20-some years ago, that Route 4 in the center of town should be brought into a narrow, not a Route 44, a narrow four-lane highway. Now, I can't call for a vote. That would not be appropriate. But I ask the question, with the situation we have now, who would not wish that that would have been completed back in 1990 or 91? So I say tonight that if there was a cheaper way to do it, then we should go that direction. I hear there is not a, a more, less expensive way. And, and, and I would strongly recommend to the people of this community that we move forward and not make the mistake that we have made a number of times in the past. And I thank the council, the school board, the building committee for their wonderful work and have great confidence. I, I just would finish. Jerry Havlin, who was a prior chairman of the council, asked me to share one thing. He was going to be here this evening, and he, and he's in support of this project, very much so. But he said, you know, George, the confidence I have, I had the opportunity to serve with Gene Barron and Bill Wadsworth when the upper-middle school, which came in at budget and below, or elementary school, became in at budget and below cost. And he said, there's one thing about Bill Wadsworth and Gene, and I know of the others, they want a buck fifty for every dollar they spend. I have great confidence. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yep. Good evening. I'm Lee, homeowner in Bradford Walk. I just have a few comments for tonight. Hopefully, no more than one minute. As a parent of a second grader in Farmington, I'm all here for education. When I first heard of this FHS renovation project, I was about to support it. However, as a taxpayer, we are responsible for not only just the high school, but also all the other schools in town. Noah Wallace built in 1901, prior to Farmington High School. Union School built in 1940s. Half of IAR built in the 60s to 70s. Most of them were not in good conditions. As we all know, no air conditioning on all of those mentioned schools. And we'll need a major renovation probably over the next few years. If we, if we reach our debt ceiling on this high school project, we may not be able to fix any other schools or any other project in town for many years. So this is very concerning and not fair to our kids and teachers. That's why I changed my mind and decided to vote no. And voting no means I'm looking forward a better way. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir.
So I have two questions. The first of which-
Could you, could you please just state your name and address?
Sorry, Victor Troffma, 15 Ledgew Drive.
Thank you.
So my question is about, you mentioned tax abatements, and I was wondering if the mill rate and the tax increase that you have projected are in general or are for the unabated taxes? Because I assume that if some, if some portion, if some town taxes are abated, that that will cause further increase on other people's taxes who are not abated. Is that the case?
Would you like to answer that? Yeah, sure.
Could you ask your question one more time?
So earlier, it was mentioned that the town of Farmington offers a tax abatement program, and I was wondering if the estimates for the increased taxes are for all Farmington properties or are for those with unabated taxes?
These are just estimates, and it would include, if you're qualified for a tax abatement, it would be worked into those numbers, yes.
So would that mean that for those of us who do not qualify for tax abatement, those numbers might in fact be higher than listed?
No, I don't, I don't think that would be accurate.
So my, my next question is, I guess rhetorical, but I'm, so I'm an FHS graduate, and I think we have one of the best high schools in the state and the best, you know, education in the state. I mean, there's 169 towns, we're number eight, so that's pretty good. And this high school looks really stunning, and it looks like amazing. But I guess my question is, is this an investment in the high school? An investment into a building or is it really an investment into our kids? If we're spending this much money, should we invest it in bricks or should we invest it more in teachers and in programs like Columbia that have been cut from FHS in the past? And that's rhetorical, so I don't think we need to answer, but thanks.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Richard Scalzo. I live on Strawfield.
Yes.
Detecting a theme here tonight, the haves and the have-nots. I'll keep this short. My wife and I moved to this town 15 years ago because of the school system. Not because of this building, but because of the school system. And I'm proud to say that I have a UConn student now as my older son and a sophomore here at Farmington High who's helping run this microphone, so don't cut me off, Tim. But neither of my two sons are going to see the benefits of this amazing project, which I strongly support. But I want to say this from the bottom of my heart, my tax dollars living in this community should go to this kind of a project. That's why we live in a community. That's what America is all about. We're here not just for ourselves, not just for our kids, but for each other. So I say, vote yes. It is for the greater good of the Farmington community, the students of the future of this town, for all of us, for our property values and our quality of life here. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Lynn Erickson, Webster Street. My mother graduated from that Farmington High School in 1947. My husband graduated from Farmington High School. My niece graduated from Farmington High School. I have no children, but I went to Simsbury High School, and I lived through that construction when that building was built in 1968. And I survived. I will vote yes. I know my husband's going to vote yes, because it's for the future of Farmington. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Pierre Gertin, 12 Henley Commons. I just have a few comments and observations. This is obviously a, a difficult project because of the price tag. And candidly, as I walked through the facility this evening to get here, it's, it's, it's kind of sad to think that a lot of what we walk through, we're just going to throw away. Now, maybe in the long run, that is the most viable option, but, you know, at the same time, it doesn't, some of it doesn't look all that bad. And the fact that we have things falling apart is a reflection of our inability to invest in basic maintenance and repair as things go along. So, you know, it's unfortunate to think that we're going to perhaps spend $135 million, and yet, when it comes to the annual budget process, we don't have the resources. We're unable to garner the support, okay, to provide the resources that are necessary. So my concern is, do we end up being a town that is building-rich, but we can't afford to put the high-caliber teachers, the high-caliber programs, et cetera, in it? And we all have different views on that, and I think that's what's the, kind of the tension that's being created this evening. The other item, I want to just speak real briefly on the building. I really didn't follow it all that as closely in terms of the details. My more concerns are on the financing of the building. But, but candidly, I, I can appreciate the interest in, in continuing the historic, you know, tradition of that building. But if we're going to jettison 98% of what else is here, what are we doing? We're going to- We're going to spend $7 million pre-debt service to rehab a building for office space? That's not logical. I'm sorry. I think the part of the problem here is, I would normally be a yes vote. And I'm still debating, but I'm likely to vote no. And I'm, the concern in terms of where I'm voting no is, I'm not sure that we are all fully knowledgeable of what the implications could be in terms of our financial participation in this through taxes in the future. Nancy spoke to uncertainty. I understand that. But that doesn't mean that we should disregard it and make judgments and commitments of this size without understanding the consequences of things that may go a different way. My impression about this financially is, what we're seeing is best case. I'm convinced we won't spend any more than the $135 million, because that will be all that is authorized. But the projection is we're going to borrow at 3.25%. If our debt rating is lowered, we will not borrow at 3.25%. If we're not borrowing today, but in two or three years, and we've seen a rise in interest rates, okay, it could be 4.25%, which raises the interest cost on option one with the state by $14 million and probably closer to $30 million on option two, should there not be a state grant. What is the impact if the state shifts more cost to the community that we have to bear? How does that model? We're going through a revale here. This is reflecting, including the recent tax increase that we just took as part of our, our budget increase, a 12.5% increase in our, in our mill rate and our tax burden. What happens if we shift 5% of the town valuation of property from commercial to residential? There are just an incessant number of variables that, in my opinion, have not been efficiently modeled and presented so that we all understand the pluses and the minuses of what could go wrong and how much that might cost. This debt service that we would take on would limit our flexibility to do anything else for probably at least seven years. Okay? And that, in my mind, unfortunately, is a reflection of putting too many eggs in one basket. So I just ask you to think this thing through. There's no doubt that we make, we need improvements. I'm just not sure this is a project that we literally can afford. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Dawn Ware, 15 Quail Ridge. I grew up in town, as did my husband, and graduated from Farmington High in 85. And this room looks exactly the same as when I entered it in September of 1981, except for all the chairs were there. And I have a senior who's graduating this year, as well as an eighth grader who will be going into the high school. So most of her high school years will be under construction. She'll get to probably move into the new academic room wing if this is approved. So I do have a vested interest, although they really won't, neither kid will benefit from the, the full scope of the project, but I support it. You know, over the years that my husband and I have lived in town, we watched the Taxpayers' Association continually defeat, as people have mentioned, strategic referenda that ultimately cost us millions of dollars more. The timing is terrible because everything is at the state level, but I watched a very thoughtful process. The building committee was convened last January. It consists of people with expertise in architecture, in construction, and I watched or attended meetings, listened to public comment. And there was a lot of pushback. Everyone on the building committee is going to bear the increase in taxes that this project will result in as well as the rest of us. So they had no vested interest to, to inflate or, you know, to, to build more than was absolutely necessary. I watched them push back on the architects. I watched them form the subcommittee that met individually with the architects. And it was a very thoughtful process. As people have mentioned, we looked at many different options, and this is the one that ultimately seemed the best for the town, for the students, for the kids who are going to live through the construction. And so I just fully support it. I don't think we can afford to miss the opportunity of getting the $25 million from the state of Connecticut. It's just, it's going to be a repeat of history if this doesn't get passed. We're going to end up spending, we're never going to save $25 million on another, on a project approved later. I just don't believe it. And you had a lot of experts pushing back. And so I think it would be a real missed opportunity and, and quite frankly, irresponsible to vote no.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Sarah Hewland, and I live at 21 Midwell Square. I'm going to talk as fast as I can through a number of very specific points. I did not come in tonight with prepared comments, but I think it is really important for me to address some of the things that have been said tonight. First of all, my husband formerly was on the town council, and we've certainly seen a lot of different kinds of planning in town. We intentionally purchased a home in Farmington to raise our four kids in town. My twins are in seventh grade. They will be in the high school through construction. I'm excited for them to have opportunities in a new academic building. I have two kids younger than that. First of all, I need to address just a couple of things that were said earlier. There was a comment about bus idling. The Connecticut state law is a maximum of three seconds of bus idling. Buses do not idle at schools. They are turned off. That's a very important fact for people to know, because it wasn't like that when we were all younger. And I think it's important that you know that now. Second, there was a comment earlier about the projection of this being the seventh most expensive school in the United States. That's based on the dollars that were spent when the other schools were built, not with their economic cost currently. Those schools cited were built between 2008 and 2013, some of them in regions of the country that have significantly lower cost of living. So relatively speaking, to today's cost and the cost of living in the Northeast, this high school is very inexpensive. Okay? Next, it will be incredibly expensive to fix things that are currently in this school. I myself am a high school teacher, and I'm very aware of exactly what needs to be fixed, based on the schools that I've worked in. I've taught in six schools in the tri-state area over 20 years. I'm certified in chemistry and physics, which are incredibly hard to find certifications. And the quality of the facilities here, I am not interested in working here, though I live in town and teach locally. Okay? When I look at the ceiling in this room, every ceiling tile that has a stain or a crack or is protruding violates state and federal law. Okay? So just take this as one example that you can look at while you're in here. Fixes to the current facility over time will cost more than a new building. There are enrollment concerns on both fronts, but a new high school will better meet enrollment needs on any front than the current school. Finally, I currently purchased a home, a new home, new to me, not new, in Farmington. We closed last Thursday. Our home is for sale. We have heard, we've had a ton of showings in the last three weeks. We have heard directly from potential home buyers that they do not want to purchase in Farmington, and I have a reasonably priced home, okay? I'm a teacher. I don't make a lot of money. They do not want to purchase in Farmington if this goes forward as the continued high school. So those of you that are older or kids have grown, if you are a homeowner and you are concerned about your taxes, the value of your property for sale on the market will go down. Okay? If there is not a new high school going forward. Okay? So that's something that everyone should know. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Mike Clark. I live at 13 Tanglewood Road here in Farmington. And we moved here about 27 years ago. Of those 27 years, six of those years, I was very fortunate to be the town council chairman here. And so I, my good friend George Ryder brought up some interesting historical perspective to, to this item as well. And that perspective was that every time that we have turned something down at referendum, it's come back five or 10 years later at an incredibly higher cost. The, the architect has a fancy word for that, and it's, you should put it in bigger letters, and it's called escalation. And what I, what I want you to think about is, what happens if we say no next Thursday? We get another building committee. Two years down the road, we come up with another plan, and that escalation clause is going to kick in. And we're going to be looking at some other plan at a higher price. Any of you who are heading east on Route 4 tonight, look at the wooden tap on your left, look at the, see what the score of the hockey game is. And then on your right is the Greenbrier building, which Farmington Bank offered to the town for $2 million plus the 26 acres behind it, back in the early 90s. We voted no. 10 years later, we voted yes for $12 million for the community center and the police station, which is where it should have been, at the Greenbrier, for $2 million. That's the type of escalation that we're looking at if we say no to this project. One of the, you know, having been involved in some politics, it's really easy, especially when you look at the, the national level and also at Hartford, to lose faith in some of the, our political leaders. We're really fortunate here in Farmington to have excellent political leaders, both in the town council, the Board of Ed, our leaders, Kathy Greeters, an outstanding leader. Kathy Egan is, is the best town manager in the state of Connecticut. And I'm telling you, this building committee, I know accidentally Jean Barron is behind me, she's next, but she's on the building committee. If I were building a house, Hillary Donald would be my architect. She was on the building committee and has lived in town her entire life. I would have Johnny Carrier build my house. He was on the building committee. And I would have Bill Wadsworth be the general contractor, because, and he is the chair of the building committee. These are people we all know. These are people we all respect. These are all, these are people who have a commitment and are stakeholders in this town. And if, if you're looking for a better deal, it's not going to, it's not going to happen. I know for a fact that several of the people on this building committee went into the process thinking, we are going to renovate. We are not going to build a new building. And they came out on the back end of the process saying, the best deal, the best bang for our buck is to build this new project. When I was talking about a home, those people building my home, this building is Farmington's home. We're all here tonight. We all, we have all of our meetings here. If you go back to any of you who were here for the storm in 2011, thankfully, my last year in office, my last month in office, people were living here. We had over 100 families living in this building. So this is our home. This is the center of our community. So I am emphatically behind this project. And anyone who's on the fence, I want you to look long and hard. And if you think you're going to save money by kicking the can down the road and coming back in five years, it's not going to happen. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Michelle Petroselli, Summersby Way. So I've listened to a lot of what's been said, and my point is different than almost, from what I've heard, which necessitated me to get up here. I have a child in 10th grade and one in 7th grade. And so my question is not, do we need a new school? There is no, we 100% need a new school. My daughter caught a mouse in one of her classrooms and had to carry it out, like, it is gross. There's always things that are leaking. She says the bathroom's overflowing. I mean, it's gross. It's 100% that you need a new school. My question is the timeline, because now I have someone coming in. Why, all four years, does he have to be living in this construction or pseudo-construction and not have a finished building? It just seems like that's so long. And then I can't understand why, and I know it was vetted several different places, but today it wasn't discussed, why some of the other places weren't utilized, like building something new and then just moving the kids when the new thing is there, so that all of their sports and stuff isn't disrupted? Can someone answer some of that briefly? Because that hasn't been discussed today.
Could you just reiterate some of the major points there, please?
Okay, so my point is, we 100% need a new school. My question is, I have a child who's coming into the school and all of his entire school life at the high school will be disrupted. And so as a parent of someone living through that, I wanted to know, one, why is it taking so long? And two, of the other spots that were looked at, why were they turned down? Like, some other places talked about building a new school somewhere and kids just moving when the new school was ready, versus having kids live in a transition of four phases.
Okay, I'll, I'll deal with the phasing first. The plan that we came up with, because it took literally seven different options before we settled on the one that made the most sense. And certainly, construction is disruptive. But the way that this is phased in, we build the academic tower first. All the classrooms in the existing facility can now move to this new academic wing within the first two years. So that becomes an asset for the town of Farmington right away. The next phase is, is basically building some of the core service areas with the gymnasiums and the cafeteria.
Wait, no, I understand. And I sat through all that, so I don't mean to interrupt you. But why was it not being, like, why are we not picking somewhere on Route 6 or some other place? I was, when this all started a long time ago, there was talk about building it behind the football field and just building a new school. And why was all that turned down? I guess I don't know.
I think it wasn't necessarily turned down. I mean, we were given a campus here that we could work with, and, and we think we could work with it fairly efficiently. Other spots in town, I mean, the size of the facility, the investment we have in the fields out here is something that we, we'd have to recreate somewhere else. So we really focused on this area because it had a lot of the assets that we already had, and we could, again, reasonably phase it so that it had a minimal impact on the educational process for our students.
Okay. So there's no other option. It's going to be the four phases and that. So that's the only thing, as a parent coming with students, I mean, no matter where you build the school, it's going to be an impact, it's going to be money. It just seems like it's so disruptive to have it drag on for four years. And kids or parents that are of children my children's age, that's the discussion. Yeah, we need a new school, but why is it so disruptive? And I don't know if that's still been answered, but I guess it's kind of, that's the end of it. The other thing I want to point out on the picture of the new school, and maybe I didn't notice, but it said choral room and band room, but there was never orchestra room. Is that on there somewhere too? Because that's three rooms right now, and there's only two listed on your picture. Okay, just not labeled.
Yeah, choral and band are just the general terms. We know that this, I think the band room, the bigger one, will be used as orchestra as well. We've been working with the music director throughout the whole process.
Okay, so they're happy with just two rooms, because they currently have three now.
It's just labeled in general for the graphic purposes, but we are aware of that.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Jean Barron. I'm here speaking for myself. I was coming to talk about the history of missed opportunities in town that have ultimately cost us more money. At those, during those times, we, the Board of Education had redistrict. There were portables at IAR, and we absolutely had to revisit and make sure that we had the appropriate space. That trickled up to the high school, and at that time, we had additions up at the high school because of the flavor of what was going on in town. I'm not going to go into the history, because there's no way I would be as articulate as our past chairs, George and Mike, but I do want to say that I do have a ninth grader up here. And I personally watched the phasing. If, if, is there a chance to just put that phasing slide up? I just want to say that the phasing of this project, I believe, is safe and responsible to the students that are going to be up here, including my third child, who will be part of a renovation building project up here at the high school. My other two have graduated, that came through, and they're fine. But when you looked, when I looked at this phasing project, I believe that this is the most responsible. I personally don't feel that the renovation of, of, of trying to renovate this school, which absolutely has tremendous need. I know my child's teacher has moved from a bucket to a garbage can for, when it's raining and there's, there's storms. But as we look at this, I really believe that this is safe and appropriate and that the people that were hired for this project have done this. Some of them live in town. Some of them have children affected by this. And I believe that they will be quite responsible in making sure that all of their kids, including my ninth grader, get the educational experience and the personal experience that they need while here. while here. I'd like to thank everybody. Bill Wadsworth has been a tremendous leader, Kathy Egan, Kathy Greeter, who cares about our children as much as we do. Thank you very much for all that work.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Ryan Lindroff, Fort Chelsea Place in Devonwood. My daughter's a teacher. I'm a big supporter of education, and I've listened to a lot of the comments this evening, and can only come to one conclusion, that the people sitting in the panel facing me know a lot more about this than we do on this side. The concern I have doesn't really maybe directly with the school, but a comment that someone made a little earlier, and I don't know, Mr. Moderator, who is best suited to answer this question. But $185 million is a big undertaking, and I'd just like to know whether or not it does jeopardize future projects in the town of Farmington. That's my biggest question. My second question would also go to the architect as to why they didn't include a swimming pool in the building. But those are my two questions.
Okay, so does this expenditure jeopardize further schools?
Yeah, I mean, is this going to put the town in a fiscally constrained position where if one of the middle schools or some other project comes up, we have to say, "We can't do it," because we're against some debt covenant constraint or against some financial restrictions? It just says, "We, we can't do it." And if that's the case, how long would that restriction be in place?
I really can't speak to a restriction, per se. I think something that we do as a council, and I think councils before us have done, is to try to have a balance. I think that you can't go away from here thinking that that, that what we do at this high school is...
No, I'm looking for, I'm looking for a specific answer. I'm asking you...
It is going to, it, it can't not affect...
It cannot affect, so it will affect.
No, 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 no. What I want to say, it, the effect of the dollars that are going to be spent here are going to have an effect. Some, we have to understand that to have the budgets that Kathy put before us at 3% or 2.75% for the, for the town and the board are going to have to be, our taxes would increase with that.
That's not my question.
Which will impact other things in the town.
My question is, how much money, let's just take a timeframe, how much money in the next 10 years would the town of Farmington be able to commit to another school or another major project over the next 10 years if this is voted yes? I'm not for or against, I'm not advocate, I'm just asking the question. What is the dollar limit on any project the town could undertake for, let's say, the next 10 years?
Is that something for Joe? I don't think there is one.
I think I can try to just answer your question. I mean, there's no dollar limit. I mean, every year, there would be a budget, and the council would put a budget in it, and there'll be projects, and it'll be voted on by the taxpayers, so...
So our debt, the amount of debt we can take on is unrestricted?
If the, if the taxpayers are willing to pay for the debt and the budget passes, yes.
Okay, so the town itself can take on as much debt as it possibly wants for the number of projects it wants? There's no, there's no relationship between the amount of debt the town can take on and the amount of tax revenues that it has access to?
No, I mean, no, but there would obviously be consequences. I mean, you have budgets and things of that nature, they have to get passed, your taxes have to go up, things of that nature. But, you know, there's rating agencies, how much debt you should take on, what's financially responsible, so there is consequences, but if, again, if you, if there was decided that there was another large project, and it went to a referendum, and it was voted on by the public, and then the budget came, and you have to pay for your debt, you know, we would pay for our debt. Now, if budgets weren't getting passed, we still have to pay for our debt, but you'd be cutting your services and cutting other things to be able to do that.
Does the town have a five- or 10-year plan, and are there other major projects that are on that 10-year plan?
We do have a five-year capital plan, and there are some major projects on that plan.
There are?
Yes.
And what are the top three biggest projects in that plan?
Well, one of the projects is, is that fire station renovations are on the plan, so we have some fire stations. And then we also have a large comprehensive plan that's being done now that's on the rest of the schools.
Okay. Yeah. And the swimming pool?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
John Mastriani, 920 New Britain Avenue. Graduated from Farmington High School, 2013, so proud of that. Always proud of my town. Actually, just got a job here in town, in Farmington, so I'm back after four years of going off to school. And I can't say, I can't say I'm happier than ever. First of all, to see such, everyone here, come here in the community to discuss these topics, and for the hard work of everyone in the front of the room for putting this together, really makes me proud. But I look at the new proposal here, I didn't know too much about it before coming in tonight, I'm not going to lie, but looking here and seeing everything, and remembering all of the problems that I had when I was here for four years, and, you know, not so nice areas of the building, or not having to have my poor old parents maze their way through the building just to find the guidance officer to talk about college discussion, they can just go upstairs now, the main entrance. Little things like that are all answered in the solution. And yes, it's a huge investment, but this is a huge investment for not only the students and our future, this is an investment for the entire community. So I'm really excited to see, as I continue to live here, how this building can be continued to use, used for me, for my neighbors, my family, my friends, and just to make our town incredibly better. Some of you have heard my story. I've said for years, I'm hoping to come back and continue to live here, and now that I've landed a job here in Farmington, I'm on track for that. And I'm excited to stay here, and I'm excited to continue to invest in our town, and help all of you will continue to do the same. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Charlie Kenniston. I reside at 44 Westview Terrace. I can proudly say that I have two successful daughters who attended four different blue-ribbon schools in this town. However, it wasn't the classroom of the building they were in, but the dedication of the teachers and the administrators that got them where they are today. The major concern that I and several others have is that what you're throwing at us are either estimates or best guesstimates. As Superintendent Kathy Greeter said earlier this evening, we're really not good at estimating or trying to predict what lies ahead. For those of us who have lived in this town several years, and namely 50 for me since I came down from Maine, we saw the building of the UConn Medical Center, that probably cost about twice as much as was projected, and a lengthy delay. And more recently, we saw in Hartford, the construction of the Dunkin' Donuts Ballpark that was estimated around $40 million, and it came out to be close to double that at $80 million. And more so, the team lost a whole season because of the long delay. On behalf of myself and some others, I'd like to ask three questions of Bill Wadsworth, if I may.
Yes.
I, I know that you were charged to look basically at the high school, but was any consideration given to maybe adding on to the Westwoods Elementary or Irving A. Robbins to make either of those schools a three-year school, and perhaps a smaller Farmington High School for sophomores, juniors, and seniors?
The statement of need was pretty clear about what our directions were as a building committee, and they didn't include those options.
Okay. Given the conditions of what's going on in the state, it may be in the near future that we're going to see the closing of some higher institutions of learning, namely, some of the community colleges. Has anybody talked to our legislators or somebody at the government level that might give us an indication whether in three, four, or five years, Tunxus Community College could be an option that we could consider moving into?
That certainly has been brought up, but again, if we go back to our statement of needs, it specifically dealt with this structure, and that's the statement that we were solving.
And lastly, Bill, what is the probability that we could ever get something in writing, namely, a guarantee that says we, the taxpayers of this town, wouldn't be held more responsible than the roughly $110 million that's in this brochure as being the local share remaining?
Well, I think, I think the Town Council, my interpretation of Town Council action the other, the other week was that we would, we would bond to $135.6 million, and then we would go to the state for the reimbursement that they, that they typically give the town of Farmington. And if that reimbursement wasn't there in its partial or in its entirety, we, the building committee, would look for ways to save money to get to the 100, you know, attempt to get to the $110 million number.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
Hi, Pam Fisher, Five Jewels Court. Before I talk about what I originally was coming up here for, in regards to the Tunxus Community College idea coming up, I read a release from April 3, 2017, from, I believe it's President O'Jakian, if I'm pronouncing it correctly. And all they talk about with the state's budget issues is a consolidation of administrative processes across the schools, including IT, HR, and purchasing, and also a consolidation of administrative management, and not closing of any campuses. So, and even if TCC did, you know, for some reason, I can't believe the state will let that one go when it's one of their newest ones, it's 300, I think it's what, 300,000 square feet? And also, they had 450 people graduate just this May. So it's a very strong community college, and I don't think the state, and certainly hasn't indicated that they're proposing closing that college. And if it were, I mean, it doesn't have a gym, it doesn't have fields, it doesn't have music rooms, it doesn't have one, the Founder's Hall, but it's certainly not established or set up to be a high school. And to make it so, to meet our educational specifications, I gotta believe it costs millions of dollars. So I, I, I think that's a, that's a red herring. That's another, that's a thought out there, to get people focused on something, "Oh, what if, what if?" The reason I'm up here is because of the what ifs. I attended 26 of the 29 building project committee meetings. I've attended numerous Board of Ed meetings, I've attended the Town Council meetings. Some of the information here out there, there was just one plan presented to Town Council. That is, quite frankly, false as far as the timeline. Yes, on May 23, one plan was presented, because it was the final plan, that they had seen all the others prior to that one May 23 meeting. Back up the reason, the reason we're here is because the school has problems. We are not ADA compliant. This room is the reason why the auditorium study was done. You can't build this room now, it doesn't meet code. You have no aisles through the middle, you have no handicap seating. May 15, we had a performance here, four people showed up in wheelchairs. Where are you going to put them? Where are you going to put them? One person we had to put down here, because there's performance now, we had an orchestra. One we had to put down there, one person we had to take her out of a wheelchair and put her in the seat, and the other one, a child, in a tilt-and-space custom wheelchair, non-ambulatory, he can't be taken out of that seat. He doesn't have postural control. We had to park him, well, that man is right there with that camera. His mother had to sit in a folding chair behind him. That's disgraceful. All of you walked in here. We have kids in this school who are in wheelchairs, who have to use special ambulatory equipment, and they can't get in here safely and be parked in here safely. We have bathrooms you can't get into because the wheelchairs don't rotate to give you the right circumference to get in and out of that handicap bathroom. We have one real handicap bathroom here, but we have to secure that because there's personal care equipment in there for the students who need it. It's not just this room. Our library has a second floor you can't reach, so we actually have to cap the number of kids that go into the library, because they're not allowed up there, because someone in a wheelchair can't go up there. We have numerous bathrooms, our fields, my in-laws had a tough time getting up to the fields for graduation. And I say, you know, you know it's true, we're not ADA compliant. The law of 1990 says you become ADA compliant when you renovate. Why do you think these chairs haven't been changed in almost 40 years, people? Because if we changed out the chairs, you gotta make it ADA compliant. That's the law. So instead, we sit in 40-year-old chairs, in December, when we had a holiday concert, two of them collapsed with people in them. So there are bigger issues. We are on, we're not compliant ADA in multiple areas of this school. We have a knee-osc accreditation issue. People have poo-pooed that, "Oh, no, you're going to get your accreditation." Well, I'm thinking, from a hospital perspective, we take our accreditation seriously. It's big, it's a big deal. Now, they may only come 10 years here, but they were here in 2004, 2005 and said, "You have issues with your facility, not the quality of your education." Don't get me wrong. You have issues with your facility. They came back in September 2015, said, "Huh, you haven't really done anything about this. You are now in warning." So when they come back in eight and a half years, and we may still have this building, do you really think they're going to say, "Oh, you get another 10 years"? So what's the next, or if you, if Farmington, the town of Farmington doesn't take an accreditation agency seriously, do you think that agency is going to say, "Well, other towns not take us seriously"? So that's an issue. The Office of Civil Rights, a federal agency, has cited us for being not compliant with ADA. So that's where all of this is coming from, and they try to meet the educational specifications. They worked hard to try and do that, to meet every one of our issues of this building. This is the plan we have. It solves the problems. So that's why I'm here, because I went to these meetings, thank God I had the time to do it. I know everyone doesn't. But if you're on the fence, I urge you to go to the FHSbuildingproject.org, you read the minutes, look at the videos, you see the hard work that these people did, and looking at numerous, numerous plans, and how the members were encouraged to communicate their concerns as they were picking out these plans, how they welcomed people from the public, like me, to give feedback during these plans. So it was not done in a vacuum, there was all kinds of input, and I urge you to please go look at the history of it. About 1,500 people a day are in this building. 1,500 people. It is our highest-volume building in town, it has to be. 1,500 people. You've got 1,200 students, you've got faculty, custodians, you've got everybody working here, you've got teams coming in in the evening. This represents our town with all the people coming in and out of it. And I know, from me traveling, my kids are done, but from me traveling to all these sports stuff, "How come we can't get a nice high school like this?" How many of you have heard that? How many of you have heard that? You go to basketball games, you go to other places, why can't we have a nice, my, my tax dollars should pay for everybody else's high schools. Weatherfield's got to renovate its new, Berlins got to renovate its new, my tax dollars should pay for that, but I want my tax dollars to pay for this one. So please, I urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Jennifer Decker, Briarwood Road. I have a couple finance questions, and can I please have the tax and budget worksheet back up? And while you're doing that, I'll answer, ask my other questions. The project contingency of $6 million, is that a recommended amount? I'm just wondering where that comes from. It, at 5%, it seems kind of low. My projects never come within 5%.
Which slide are we looking for?
The tax and budget worksheet.
Tax.
Yeah, next one, right there, yes. So my first question wasn't about that, though. The $6 million project contingency, is that a recommended amount? 5% seems kind of low to me.
Yes, based upon new construction, that is the amount in a percent that we felt comfortable carrying in the budget.
But is that a recommended amount, or?
Yes.
Okay. And then, I know you mentioned the fire stations and the other schools, but you didn't give dollar amounts. How much is the town looking at as potential new debt that we might need to take on for those projects?
If you just bear with me for one second, I will look at our five-year capital plan. In the five-year capital plan, the fire station renovations are projected at $9 million. And I'll turn it over to the school to see what their projections were for their projects.
We are currently engaging in a capital and facility review. We do have a capital five-year plan... We do have a capital five-year plan, I don't have that with me, but you can find that on our website. But above and beyond that, we are engaged in a capital and facility review, and that was a recommendation of the Capital Ad Hoc Committee, that's underway right now. We anticipate a report to be provided to the community by the fall of this year, and that would give a long-term view of capital expenditures and a long-term view of facility plans.
So you don't have an estimate right now?
I don't have an estimate right now because we're engaged in the study right now.
All right, how about last year's five-year plan?
One moment. So, this includes what was funded for this year, but it is $5,406,130.
Thank you. The sections of the school that were built in 2004 that the debt is not yet paid off, how much money is still outstanding that is going to be demolished? I'm tough, apparently.
2.9 million.
And over how many years is that?
2026.
Okay, and then, can you answer questions on this slide?
I could try.
Okay, so I'm not following why the, you're saying there's a balloon payment in 1920? How come the next year's debt isn't going down then if there's just a balloon payment in one year?
In 1920, we are taking on our clean water fund loan at that time, and then that loan starts going down slowly after that. But then we were planning on issuing our first, our bond for $50 million, so for the school project, which would bring up the debt. So this is a, of all our school debt, so it would be the high school taking on the debt there, and then our sewer project taking on the debt there, and then we have the other debt that we have existing today.
Okay, so on the page before, where you have the amortization schedule?
Yep.
We're showing in 18, 2018, we would have a $5.5 million payment that's not reflected there?
What we're trying, what we've tried to show is that, what I said is that we wouldn't bond $100 million or $135 million all at once. We'd bond it out in different, different ways. So what I tried to do is, again, just trying to show a snapshot in time to show how it would work in different scenarios. So it would be, you would get a full financial picture. So what we did with the bond is, is that what the purpose of that was showing a total cost and what the mill rate increase would be, and how it would work if we did that. Then what I tried to do here is put it into our tax and budget worksheet, and shows our debt and everything that exists. But there's a lot of assumptions on this-
Sure.
-that we would make, and we would probably, the council would make changes and adjustments, but it's just a snapshot in time.
Okay, it's very confusing because it doesn't match the amortization schedules-
Right, I understand that.
...that you have presented. Okay, and my final question is, on the page before, where you're showing that our debt service as a percentage budget is gonna be 13.8%, is that just for the school project, or is that what our debt service will be all in?
Total.
Okay, so any other projects that we added on top of that, well then, this is just going to go above and beyond these?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Emily Colini, I'm at 30 High Street. I have one, excuse me, I have one question and then one comment.
Yes.
My question is regards to a flyer I picked up on the table that no one has addressed. I wondered if this is from the town, it talks about, are we making the most of HF, I did it again, of FHS? And it cites an architect, tech and architects, but I haven't heard anybody talk about that, and I was wondering if that was a document the town put out? Is it from anybody official?
That's not a document that the town has put out.
Oh, okay, so it doesn't represent any of the people sitting at the table up there?
No.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
I hadn't heard anything. So my comment is that I would like to thank the Town Council, the Board of Ed, and most of all, the Building Committee, as well as the team from Castle Booze for their hard work and their dedication for the past year and a half. They've seen this project through many phases and made compromises and sacrifices along the way. I believe that this project has been thoroughly considered, it has been thoughtfully vetted and carefully engineered to fulfill the statement of need created at the onset of the project. It is common knowledge that the Farmington Public Schools are highly ranked, both in our state and in our country. I also believe it's common knowledge that it is not the facilities that earn us this high ranking. If it's not the facilities, then I think we need to give credit to the educators. As a former educator myself, and someone who knows lots of educators in the town, I think we would be doing them a disservice to not give them a safe, clean, and well-designed school in which to go to work each day. We talk about valuing education, we talk about it being the most important part of our town, but we also have to value the people who have dedicated their lives to this profession. And to ask them to come and work in a building that is not safe and not up to code is simply unacceptable. The current conditions are deplorable for both the teachers and the students, and we as a town must act now to provide them with an environment that matches the impressive learning and thinking that goes on within. On June 15th, out of respect for our educators and students, I will be voting yes, and I urge you to stand with me and vote yes.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Ron White, 19 Wells Road. Question, I believe, for Bill, in basically just construction costs, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the cost per square foot, and I understand that it's a multi-phased and that drives costs up. And I was, I think, you know, if we count in financing, it's like $600 a square foot, maybe $700 a square foot. If you build off-site, I was expecting a number more in the $200 to $250 a square foot range. Is that completely off-board, or is it the phasing that really drives the cost up as high as it is?
Well, I think the construction costs, I don't know if you can help out this, you probably know it better in terms of details.
Yeah, $200 to $250 a square foot for construction, for commercial construction, doesn't exist in this day and age. When we're developing budgets for school projects, we customarily start just for the construction at $375. That doesn't include the fees and the expenses, the contingencies, the escalation, or phasing premiums. This project, based upon $135 million, and if you actually take out the Board of Ed component to that, and we just look at a high school to high school comparison, and we did that analysis, we're roughly just over $500 a square foot. What we've seen historically in the last few years, it ranges from $480 to $590 a square foot. So Farmington High School right now is on the lower end of what we've seen in the state of Connecticut for high school projects, on a cost-per-square-foot basis.
So effectively, it wouldn't be cost-effective to move to a separate location?
It depends, I mean, if you factor in site acquisition costs, you factor in utilities, we've got a road infrastructure to the facility already, it's hard to predict what that cost would be. My guess is it wouldn't be less.
I guess I'm just old and the number scares me. I will be voting yes, I've stood up here many times and supported the Board of Ed and asked for more funding than what the town was quite often willing to do so. It's just that, it is an awful lot of money. But I will be voting yes, I believe it is good for the school, for the system, and for the town, and we do need it. I've got, you know, three kids that have gone through the system and they're doing quite well. Thanks, and thanks for, thanks for all your service.
Yes, sir, thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is John Silver, 70 Peggy Lane.
Yes.
Every time I come into the school, I go by one of the glass boards, and I look in and I see my grandfather's picture from like 1932 or 1933 basketball team, and I'd wonder what my grandfather, when he turned 100, what would say about them still having the same school and the same look of way, way back then. I wasn't fortunate enough to grow up in Farmington. I grew up in, I won't name the city, but it's around here, and it was dilapidated school systems. And I've seen the effect that that has on the school. And, you know, and I haven't been in this school, in this auditorium, in many years, since my sister was a student here. Luckily, my parents moved to Farmington, guess what, why they moved for the school system. And when I come in here and I look at the tiles, and I look at the, just the condition, look, there's a crack right there, they're discolored over here, there's no rose. I mean, it's actually, it's disheartening and somewhat embarrassing. I'm upset about what I see here. The reason I came to the meeting is I have to have two kids in town, and they're fifth grade and second grade. I don't send them, I send them to private school, that's my choice, for now, but they were, are gonna go to Farmington High School, and obviously, I have a vested interest in it, in bringing children to here and having a nice school system. But, most importantly, I just wanted to respect the taxpayer, and then when I saw the cost at $135 million, I was like, no way. And then, you know, I started thinking about it, and then I'm hearing a lot of the objections here. And I started doing some more research on the school system and why we had to do it. And I hate to break it to some taxpayers who don't want the tax increase, I don't want the tax increase, we're getting a new school, we're gonna be spending money on school eventually. And there's a lot of, been a lot of talk here today about budget uncertainty, budget impact, and what, you know, how will we know the costs? Here's what I know about, about rising costs. Construction's gonna cost more a year from now, it'll cost more a year from now, it'll cost you more a year from now. We're gonna lose state funding 25 million, 20% June 30th. That's not coming back if anybody reads the papers. Okay, the other, the other thing is, is people keep on talking about budget certainty and uncertainty. The big problem's gonna happen is, is if I'm issuing debt, and I'm Moody's, and somebody's talking about the debt, we know that we have a major capital expenditure happening, that's already baked into the analysis. So if we're gonna be worried about borrowing rates, which interest rates are gonna be rising, I don't think anybody's gonna dispute that, it's gonna get more expensive to borrow, it's gonna get more expensive to produce. And then, at the end of the day, we need a new school, school. I mean, I haven't heard any, I don't know if anybody here is, is what's the contingency if this is voted down? That's actually my biggest concern after hearing a lot of the objections here today. What is the, what's gonna happen if it gets voted down? Are we just gonna go back and, you know, politically have better public relations and get the same thing passed next year at maybe 15 to 20 to 30% higher cost? That's not good for the taxpayers. I mean, is not repairing the school, that is not an option. I mean, I don't think not spending 70, 80, 90, 100 million on a whole school, I mean, this is not a $10 million fix. So I don't understand that kind of objection to it. It is opulent, it is big, it, 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 it's really hard to grasp. But I'm not sure that we have a choice to pay, and, you know, if you ever did a roof or you ever had to repair something in your house, the longer you wait, the more expensive it gets. And this is only gonna get more expensive. So I mean, if, I trust the committee and how much they, time they put in, it seems like they did an excellent job, they've considered a lot of options, if this is the best option that we got, I don't understand how somebody who's been in it for 18 months is giving us something that they don't think is good enough, and then we just looked at it, and we just looked at the final cost, and we immediately assumed that, oh, there's a better way. Well, then, maybe we should be on the committee. But, I mean, they've worked really hard on this, and I urge everybody to vote yes, because, you know, at least I know, my taxes are going up, I know how much it is, I know how much the bonding is. You know, after June 30th, you know, it could be double, who knows? That is, that is the uncertainty I am trying to avoid by voting yes on this, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Tom Zachio, Hilltop Road. My question is addressed to the architects. This project is billed as a green project, and I don't see any solar panels, I don't see any way to make this school energy efficient. It is all-new construction, and I'm sure there'll be insulation, but I'm wondering why we can't cut the ongoing costs every year by making this a truly green building?
The building will be sustainable. One of the requirements by the state of Connecticut is you meet the Connecticut High Performance Building Standard, which if you're at all familiar with sustainability design, there's an acronym LEED, Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. It's a federal program that the state of Connecticut adopted a number of years ago for federally or for state-funded projects. You may not see the sustainability measures within the building, but the systems will be highly energy-efficient, the envelope will be very tight in terms of weather, air, solar, you know, impacts, photovoltaics, solar domestic outwater systems, those are expensive measures that have lengthy paybacks, that could still be explored down the road, but historically, you don't generally see that type of system today. A few years ago, when construction costs were less expensive, yeah, they were putting in some of those highly visible, sustainable measures, but today, you're not seeing, you're not seeing that programmed into the, into most school projects.
From my reading, though, I understand that solar panels pay for themselves in seven to 10 years. And I, just wondering why more effort wasn't put into making this, the cost of ongoing energy, less for this building?
Well, the energy costs will be less for this new building versus the current building.
Yes, I know, but it's still hundreds of thousands of dollars in electricity costs, or maintenance costs.
You know, we're certainly, early on in design, we could explore, you know, other sustainability measures and have them priced out. But traditionally, I'm just telling you what I've seen in the past, you know, it's an expensive undertaking. Yes, there may be a payback down the road, but it's, there's a higher capital cost that most client districts can't absorb initially.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
My name is Trevor Demming. I currently live on 176 Lovely Street, right in the heart of Unionville. I'm a member of the Farmington High School class of 2006, and just two days ago, I graduated summa cum laude with an associate degree in CNC machining. I credit my involvement with Farmington High School's robotics team that inspired me to pursue a technology and engineering-based career. In a time where people my age and a little younger are flooding out of the state in a mass exodus, I have chosen to stay. The NEOS review has consistently commented that the material being taught here at Farmington High School and the way the teachers present it is amazing. The quality of education here is not in question. What the NEOS review says is that the one thing holding them back is the facility. Picture this for a moment, if you vote yes, the quality of education provided by the teachers can become that much better. Since my involvement in one of the earlier brainstorming meetings, I think last summer, I have been in full support of this project since, and come the 15th, that is why I will be voting yes.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Andrea Benin for Thatcher Terrace. I really wanna thank the group here for pulling together what seems like a really outstanding proposal, and something that appears to be really critical for the future of our town, and is frankly, pretty exciting. My children will end up spending their entire high school careers in the construction, and I spent a lot of time on the website trying to find some information about the hazardous material containment, testing, and other types of plans, and I'm wondering if there's a way that that can be made more public and understandable, more information on the website, or something. I'm, you know, obviously anxious about what that will mean for them as far as asbestos-led other exposures, and how we will be testing for that and properly containing it. I do understand that the demolitions will be during the summer times, but, you know, having spent a good amount of time living in another city where we had a substantial amount of lead problems and lead paint, and seeing the ages of these buildings makes me fairly anxious.
We certainly expect to come across some hazardous materials as we get deeper into this building, and one of our requirements, putting together some of our soft costs, is that we had a hazardous waste consultant come onboard and study this building and come up with the areas where we're, you know, that are obvious in terms of removal of hazardous waste, which is, like you said, programmed for the summer months rather than during school schedule itself, so that we could try to mitigate the impact it would have,
So would there be testing then in the areas where the children will be?
An absolute requirement for any hazmat abatement process or program is air testing. The, the state will not allow anybody to occupy any facility that was recently abated without doing proper air testing. So yes, before any student, sorry, faculty member for that matter, enters into this building post-abatement, air testing has to be done and verified by the state of Connecticut that it's clear of any known hazards.
And I guess, you know, the question my husband had brought up earlier, because, you know, we lived in New Haven for many years, and I think that Amity High School is the one that, isn't that now, there's all that like sick building drama and, you know, there's all that other drama that plays out. And so I do, I guess I would like to, not that I would have the expertise per se to evaluate it, but it might make me feel a little bit better to see the materials as they come up on the website or whatever it is, to have some bit of information about, in a little bit more detail. And I, I just don't know. Is it possible to provide the education or whatever that we would need to try to understand that and feel comfortable, right? Do I have to send my kids to Miss Porter's? No, you know, like whatever, you know, do I have to panic and take them out of the school? Or would I still be sending them to school?
Yeah, the report is preliminary at this point. It was, it was done at a basis to provide a remediation cost that we can include in the budget. As we move forward with design and comprehensive testing, we can confirm what's actually in the building versus use a basis of suspicion.
Okay, so let me ask the question maybe differently. Maybe I wasn't super clear. I guess as, maybe this is my naivete about the process and my sort of newness to trying to engage in the town process, but then as the, as the project went through, would there be opportunities to go back and forth over that piece of the aspect of it, right? So that, and I think, you know, I would feel the same way that that other woman had felt that we would hate to be in a situation later looking back and feel that we hadn't done it, you know, 200% correctly. So I just would want to know, how would we have a line of sight into that process or be able to participate in it in a way that was meaningful as a parent?
Okay.
I think the Building Committee has strived very much to make sure that the communication, that they communicate with the public in the best way. And I'm sure that the Building Committee, they have, we have a subcommittee that does all the communication and checks the website and does different things. And many of our members are here, and I think they'd be more than willing to look at your questions and try to have a whole communication plan that we do put on the website as we move forward on the, in the process.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Is there anyone else that has a question this evening? Comment? A question, comment? Left, right, left, okay. Bill, do you have anything else that you'd like to say or add?
I would just like to publicly recognize the members of the Building Committee themselves. As was stated, we've had 29 meetings, official Building Committee meetings over the past year and a half. We had three subcommittees that dealt with contracts, communication, and value engineering. So I'd like to thank Gene Barron, Justin Bernier, Johnny Carrier, Hillary Donald, Dan Kleiman, and Michelle Hamilton for their efforts over the past year and a half. So thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Well, thank you, Mr. Wadsworth. We're not done yet. I require a motion that we adjourn this special town meeting to the polls at referendum, I get paid by the word, to the polls at referendum to be held on June 15th, 2017, all as contained in the warning. Do we have such a motion?
Next, hold on a minute.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, everyone.